Good evening.
The recording has started.
My name is Jim Brown, Chairman of the Board of Finance. And welcome to the Virtual Board of Finance Special Meeting. It's Tuesday, May 5th. And if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you everyone for being here. We have three voting items tonight. And then we'll get a follow-up on the Board of Ed. And the proposed budget. And we will hear from, a follow-up from H and H. And Mr. Brian Vehi will be here. So before we begin, again, this is Jim Brown, Chairman of the Board of Finance. I want to take a few moments to comment on the Fairfield Police Union and Fairfield Firefighters Association response to the Board of Finance meeting from 4/29. And this will be the only comment on this subject tonight, and then we will move on. As Chair of the Board of Finance, I am extremely proud of the work, diligence, discussion, and decisions this Board has made to safeguard the assets of the town and to be good stewards of taxpayer funds. That said, on some occasions, offhanded comments or remarks do happen. And whether taken out of context or said in an inappropriate manner, they cause hurt feelings, misunderstandings, and offense. To the extent that this happened in our last meeting, while discussing overtime expenses related to the COVID crisis, I apologize as Chairman of this Board. I can assure everyone that all our members, many with years of volunteer service to this town, have respect for all departments, town employees, and the Board of Ed. We have recognized their contribution because their contribution deserves to be recognized. We routinely, routinely thank them all and recognize them for their dedicated service and commitment. The Vice Chair of this Board, Krista Whit, and I spoke with Chief Liddy and Chief McCarthy by phone and in person regarding this matter and our perspective. We thank them for the opportunity to talk this through so we can move forward in a positive manner for the benefit of the town. I understand firsthand the stress that this pandemic can cause to the people on the front line. My daughter is an ER nurse in Stanford Hospital. And while I could not be more proud, I do worry about her every day. So we all must recognize that no one has an easy job right now. This includes the first responders, the general public, and yes, members of the Board of Finance. While we all are trying to make the right decisions for the town and the taxpayers in this time of great economic uncertainty, we are also managing our personal circumstances on a day-to-day basis, including our own businesses. Between the pandemic and the economic reality that we are all living in, it is a brutal balance. We, as the Board of Finance, we respect the annual budget process. We respect the job we are elected to do. We take our responsibility seriously. We will continue to ask our questions and press forward to make proper decisions. Now, all this being said, I am compelled to correct some inaccurate comments from the police and fire unions that were made in very public forums, reported in social media, newspapers, and on Channel 12 News. These comments alleged that board members were quote-unquote laughing and quote-unquote chuckling after a comment from a board member that the unions took particular offense to. This action seemed to have caused as much discontent as anything else, including the comment itself. The unions opine that members of the Board of Finance acted childish, immature with a lack of decorum, inability to lead by example, and that the behavior was disgusting and that we were, and that we embarrassed ourselves. That is pretty strong language. That is pretty insulting. It just also happens to be completely inaccurate. For the record, the laughter was not from anyone on the Board of Finance. Our mics were on mute, and any follow-up comments and laughter did not come from anyone on the Board. In fact, they could not have. Those comments and laughter came from town administration employees that were also on the call, whom I understand have apologized to the police and fire unions. In addition, I took myself off mute and cut the conversation short. I did not remain silent, as was erroneously stated. I know because I fumbled to take myself off mute to do so. I request that these inaccurate, derogatory, and inflammatory statements against the Board of Finance be corrected by police and fire unions in the same public manner they were alleged. Further, it was also stated on Channel 12 News site webpage that the Board of Finance was approached with the Memorandum of Understanding, an MOU, put forth by the fire union to reduce overtime costs for the town. For the record, the Board of Finance was not notified of any such document. We were never told it existed and learned about it only when reading the comments from the fire union. We did not receive a copy of the MOU until the town attorney forwarded to me just this morning. Assuming this MOU has been approved and is in place to reduce overtime costs to the town, we thank the Fairfield Firefighters. We hereby, however, request that the administration forward a copy of any future MOU that affects any existing bargaining agreement to us as soon as it is executed so that we can review it for any financial effects it has on town finances that we may have to deal with. These MOUs need to be public. Lastly, let us not forget the comments and discussion in question with the last 20 minutes of a five-hour meeting. The questions asked were regarding a document produced by the Finance Department detailing incremental cost overruns associated with COVID-19 and the potential for FEMA reimbursements to our taxpayers. It is important to note, we have been denied FEMA reimbursements of town expenses from a disaster in the past, despite being assured we would receive the funds. Therefore, we were appropriately asking for explanations. There were limited answers that evening, so we asked for additional documentation regarding these costs being borne to our taxpayers until such time as FEMA renders a decision. A crisis such as the pandemic is severe, but that does not allow us to advocate our responsibility to provide financial oversight. In fact, given the economic situation, it requires more diligence by all of us. The Board may be required to find funds to cover unbudgeted expenses. At the end of the day, wherever we find the funds, they ultimately come from the taxpayers. For any comments in this difficult time that were taken in offense or hurt feelings, again, my apologies. Our job is to ask questions on behalf of the taxpayers, including the many town and Board of Ed employees that live with us in town. We will continue to ask difficult questions regarding the budget and related town finances. Every board member needs to feel comfortable and confident doing just that in a respectful manner. This Board has been very transparent in how we feel we need to take into consideration town services and a tax rate that people can afford at this most difficult time. We were given a budget that was written for a pre-pandemic world, and it needs to be modified. And as much as I thank the department heads and the employees of our town services and Board of Ed services, I want to thank this Board, the people I work with, for their tireless effort to recommend a budget that is in line with the times we are facing. That ends my comments, and I thank you for listening. And we are going to move on to our agenda. I want to ask everyone that when you do speak, state your name so we do not have any confusion. Again, thank you for listening. I appreciate your time. Okay, item number three. We're going to the Engineering Manager, Mr. Hurley, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectment. Now, I'd like to take a vote to waive this reading. Can I, Mr. DeWitt? Seconded by Mr. Matola, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, then, Mr. Hurley, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Uh, one, one question, though, on that, for that reading. There might have been a typo in some of the, um, uh, resolution things. It's, um, the immediately, I guess it'd be the first whereas. It says, uh, 2,000, but you can see the comma is where it's supposed to be. It's really 200,000. I don't know if anyone, I just wanted to point that out to people.
Wait, I gotta find that. Yeah, I see that. It says two, so it's 200?
Yeah, it's 200,000.
Okay.
All right, that was, uh...
We got to amend this. All right, um, let's make an amendment. Can I have a motion to amend this motion? Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. So for the record, the, the amount is, what's the exact amount, Mr. Hurley?
Well, the RTM approved the $200,000 in non-recurring capital.
So we, this is on the table. We make a motion to change the $2,000 to $200,000 for the Grassmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is amended. Mr. Hurley, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And that's really just for background information. Uh, the resolution, uh, before you, the, um, it's a, uh, a, a $2,147,800 local transportation capital improvement project called LOC SIP. And it, um, the, it's 100% covered for construction costs, eligible construction costs. And, uh, the Grassmere Neighborhood Pedestrian Improvements Grant is based on a road safety audit performed by the town, the state, the police, economic director, and other interested parties a few years ago. Uh, the town also hosted a neighborhood meeting with the local RTM members and residents of Shoreham Village, Shoreham Terrace, and Grassmere Avenue. The project consists of new and wider sidewalk improvements, ADA ramp components, road narrowing signs, pavement markings, curbs, driveway aprons, and potential pedestrian crossing warning lights or pedestrian signal, minor drainage, and streetscape improvements. Um, as we were alluding to before, back in February of 2019, the town boards approved $200,000 for the design costs. And the LOC SIP grant covers 100% of the eligible construction costs, currently set for about $2.14 million. So, um, I just wanted to say that, uh, it's being brought because, um, the state is, the DOT is requiring, uh, the town to sign, or the first select woman to sign the Commitment to Fund Letter, which should have been in your, your packets as well.
Yes, we did get that. Thank you. Are there any questions on this resolution for Mr. Hurley? Okay. So all those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous for fair TV. Moving on to item number four. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectment. Again, I'm going to ask for a motion to waive the reading. Can I have a motion, Mr. Matola?
Waive reading.
By Ms. Charlton? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Hurley, back to you.
Okay, thank you. William Hurley, Engineering Manager. Uh, this one here, we call this the Westport Bridges Grant. It's basically a, um, a pilot program where, under the typical federal local bridge program, the town is responsible for paying, uh, 20% of the design, of every phase. Design phase, right-of-way, and construction and administration, uh, phase. With this pilot program, which we share with, uh, Westport, who will be the lead agency, uh, the town, uh, the towns don't have to pay for the design. Uh, that will be covered by the state as part of this pilot grant. So, um, the pilot grant would be that the state designs or has their consultants that they've pre-selected on a quality-based selection, where they're the ones that are most knowledgeable and, and they'll speed up the process for the bridge design. Uh, rather than some of the bridge designs that take two or three years, maybe even longer, they're expecting with this group to only be about 18 months, maybe two years at most. Uh, so they picked the, really the cream of the crop for it, and they'll be paying for, um, 20% of the, uh, bridge design costs with the federal government covering the other 80%. So for the design, uh, we don't have to pay anything. And so I just wanted to make the boards aware of that and, um, the fact that later on, in about 18 to 24 months, we will be presented with maybe rights-of-way costs and deconstruction, which again would be 80% federally reimbursed. And so therefore, the town of Westport and the town of Fairfield would do about, you know, 10% each on those costs. So I just wanted to give, uh, everybody a heads up on that. We will have to go back for funding when that occurs. But I didn't want to put the Board or, or the town in a, a awkward position where, you know, 18 months, all of a sudden, we're asking for money. Well, we didn't even know this was going to happen. So that's why I wanted to bring it up. Uh, one of the bridges, uh, which is the, um, King's Highway West is already on our Capital Five-Year Plan or the Waterfall Chart. And the Wakeman Lane one is not. So come, come this September, I will put that on our, um, uh, chart. Probably for fiscal year, I think it would be 2022 or 2023. So I just wanted to make, uh, everybody aware of that. And typically, bridges are running in around the $3 million range for, for everything, construction and construction inspection and all that. So, um, in a, in a couple of years, we'd probably be looking for 300 or maybe just to cover myself with the inflation and, and some other unforeseen things. 300 or 350,000 when that time comes. So I'm here to answer any questions, uh, regarding, uh, these grants. But, uh, it's the typical federal local bridge program. But on this one, because it's a pilot program, the state is actually covering the remainder of the design costs, which I think is a, obviously a home run for both the town of Westport and the town of Fairfield.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Any questions for Mr. Hurley? This is Jim Brown. Okay, this motion is before us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Jim. Good luck with everything.
Thank you. Have a good night. We are on to item number five. To hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Interim Director of Public Works to transfer $400,000 from Debt Service Fund, to Capital Non-Recurring Remediation, to cover ongoing remediation costs. Can I have a motion to put this before us, please? Mrs. Charlton, seconded by Ms. Marmian? So this is a discussion we had last week with Mr. Carey. It is very familiar to us. We agreed on the $400,000. There should not be much, uh, discussion at this point. But I'll open up to the Board, just in case there's any question. Mr. Walsh?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we're moving this $400,000 into Capital Non-Recurring for, um, the department. Can they use it for anything else other than fill pile?
It cannot. This money is designated for fill pile expense only for ongoing remediation costs.
Um, is somebody on Finance on?
Yeah, I don't see...
Caitlin's on.
Where are you, Caitlin? Ms. Bossy?
Yes.
She's on.
I'm here, sorry.
Okay, um, are you on camera?
I'm, yes, I did hear the question, yes. Um, no, my camera's not working on my laptop. I told, I've been trying to fix it. Um, but this account is only used for fill pile costs.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bossy. Mr. Walsh?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, item number six, discussion point, follow-up on the Board of Ed's proposed budget. I want to thank the Board of Ed for coming back to us to have this discussion. Thank you for your updates. And also thank you for your document that you sent over. Tonight, we have with us Superintendent Mike Cummings, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Marie Moncel, Executive Director of Operations, Angeles Popper George, Executive Director of Personnel and Legal Services, Title IX Coordinator, Ms. Conleen Dizzi, Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services, Robert Mancusi. We have Board of Ed Chair, Ms. Christine Vitale. We have Board of Ed Vice Chair, Mr. Nick Asa. And we have Mr. Jeff Peterson with us as well. So we have the bases covered. Again, thank you for your documents. Where would you like to begin, Mr. Cummings? We do have this latest document. I'm not sure if you wanted to begin there that was sent over today, or would you like to begin somewhere else?
Yeah, we can, we can begin. And I'm going to have, uh, first of all, thank you for having us this evening. And, um, uh, Ms. Moncel is going to walk through that document in a minute. I, um, I just wanted to point out, and I hope we can come back to this. Um, but one of the things that we're looking at as we, as we learn more information, some of which is reflected in the updated document that, again, Ms. Moncel's going to walk through. But one of the things that we're, um, starting to deal with, or starting to put, get a better handle on, I should say, is what the 2021 school year is going to look like. And one of the things that we are anticipating is, uh, according to, you know, the, a lot of long-term projections, we're going to be, we're planning for a, a situation where we're, we're likely to be in and out of school during the course of the 2021 school year. By that, I mean, we're going to be, uh, seems to be in some type of social distancing format physically when we're together. And, um, and how that tells itself out into a school system, we're not quite sure yet. We're waiting for guidance. And then also possibly going out on, on long-term distance learning and what that entails. So in a sense, uh, this is, this is clearly going to have an impact on budget because there, as you mentioned earlier, um, we develop budgets ahead of a pandemic. And now, in response to a pandemic, we're looking at additional cost in technology and computers, and also, quite honestly, remediation services. So I'd like an opportunity later to detail that. But, um, I'll, I'll turn to Ms. Moncel now and have her go through the, uh, the spreadsheet with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cummings. Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vitale, you want to intervene?
Just before, um, Ms. Moncel gives you an update on the projections, I just wanted to follow up with some of the questions from the last meeting. We, the Board of Education did meet since we were on the board. I did ask them if they wanted to reconsider the original approved budget. At this time, due to the many moving parts, there was not, um, the Board did not vocalize an intent to revisit the budget. We stand by, um, the needs that we have. And over the last month, new needs have been identified. Um, so we're very hesitant about saying that anything can be reduced at this point. That said, we, um, continue the conversations with our bargaining units. They are working with us through these times, but there is still a lot of uncertainty. So I just wanted to follow up on that from the last meeting. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Superintendent and Ms. Moncel.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Thank you for the update. And thank you for the update with the, with your bargaining units. We, you know, we appreciate the continued conversation. Um, Ms. Moncel, turn it over to you, I believe.
Okay. Um, the document that you referred to, the updated projection, I'll just quickly go over the columns. Uh, the first column is what you saw last, uh, last time around, the third quarter as of, uh, April 7th. Uh, the second one, second column is the updated, um, numbers as of April 30th. Uh, a third column is a variance between the two. And then we, we did the bifurcated on, um, on this also, on the actual savings and the COVID savings that are, um, needed to, to cover deferred expenses. So I'll concentrate on column three, um, because that's where it's all at. The difference is, um, from last time is about $800,000. That is mainly due because of pupil services. You'll see on line 19. Um, we, we have been carrying for excess costs. We've been carrying the amount that we budgeted, which was 3.5 million. Um, we had a sense that it would go up based on the April filing, uh, but we weren't sure, and we waited for confirmation from the state. And, um, that number did increase by $600,000. So that's the biggest difference here. There's also some changes, I think, in, um...
We'll talk to you later, not tonight, but you...
Um, there's also, I think, a, um, a little bit of change there in tuition. Um, there's ebbs and flows with personnel, uh, changes. Um, they were offset by capital. We are now, um, going to use some of that capital. We need to release that for, uh, maintenance. And the, you'll notice on line 46, uh, that is the COVID-related, um, technology equipment. Um, sorry, I'm bouncing around here, but I'm just, I'm trying to highlight the, the big changes. Um, on line 44, uh, another significant change was, um, because of electric. We got another month's worth of invoices. That is paid through, um, March 23rd. So there was like a week of the shutdown in there. So that number's increased by the, um, 80,000. And we only have commercial heat that increased, um, by 23,000. Um, so...
Sorry, Ms. Moncel, Mr. DeWitt just has a quick question. Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, thank you, Krista Whit. Uh, Ms. Moncel, just so I'm clear, the, um, the negative numbers in your spreadsheet are bad, right? That means that, so for example, the bottom of column one, that's that 2.562, that was the 2.5 million dollar savings that we talked about on 4/7, correct?
Correct.
So if a number went up from column one to column two, that's good. If it went down, so in column two, it actually went up, but then, but then there was a difference. There was a variance. So the real, the real number we're looking at tonight looks like 2.9. Is that... So the real, the real number we're looking at tonight looks like 2.9. Is that correct?
The actual projected balance is the 3.359. But what column four does is breaks that out between how much is actual savings that is just, you know, going away, and column fi, between, the difference between that and column five, which are, we saved the money this year, but we see the need for that and the, to cover that expense in the future. It's because it's a deferred expense. It's just something that we still need, such as maintenance, but we couldn't do it this year.
So last time we talked, you know, flip this back over, so last time we talked, we talked about taking that, potentially taking that $2.5 million and moving it into a lapsing account. Are, are, at, at the end of this discussion tonight, are you gonna be recommending we put 3.359 in a non-lapsing account?
I would recommend that, well, first, there's a, there's a, I don't think you set a, you don't set a limit. By statute, there's a limit of 2% of our budget. So the cap would be 3.6 million roughly.
So either.
So up to that amount, we could put into a non-lapsing account, and I would, yes, definitely recommend that the Board of Finance allow us to do that.
But, but I guess the, what the question I'm having is, last time we talked about 2.5, tonight, when we finish here, your recommendation would be that we put 3.359 into that non-lapsing account?
Remember, that 3.359 is the number as of the end of April. That number's gonna change again. So I recommend whatever the number is at, on June 30th, up to $3.6 million, that that would go into a non-lapsing account.
Okay, that number's getting bigger, so that's a valid point, right? Because it, it went up a million dollars since the last time we talked, less than a month ago. But since we're capped at 3.6, it, it would, if, if you have that same growth pattern, which I'm sure you won't have a million dollars every month, right? We're, we're, we would be capped out at 3.6, it looks like, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Matola?
3.6 is the cap we can put in? Is that correct, Ms. Moncel?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of that question.
The 3.6 million dollars, that would be the cap that could go into that non-lapsing account.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's the current legislation.
Right, I have the statute here in front of me. So is there any reason why, that you can think of, I guess things could change where that, there won't be $3.6 million at the end of the fiscal year? You probably think there's probably gonna be a little bit more than that, correct?
Yes, I would see things like electric, you know, there being more of a balance in electric. Salaries, that, that, that's a, that's a hard one, and special ed is a hard one to predict. You know, so, I mean, some of those things could bring it down a little bit, but I would, I would expect it to go up rather than down.
All right, so for our planning purposes, avoiding on the budget, we could reasonably rely on that $3.6 million figure. Is that a fair statement?
I'm sorry, you could reasonably what?
Rely on that $3.6 million figure for our purposes when we're avoiding on the budget in the next week.
As far as putting in a non-lapsing account, yes.
Right, 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 okay, right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Ed Bateson, thank you. A quick thing, I'm hearing the 2% figure. What happens if it's above and beyond that savings? What happens to anything in excess of 2% unexpended?
Right now, under the current legislation, it would be returned to the town. You know, I have heard, you know, that it could only be changed by the legislature, by the legislature, and they're not in session in time to do that, and, and I think, you know, other people have heard that, you know, it's possible that, I don't know if it could be done through an executive order from the governor, that that cap would be lifted because let's say that everybody's in the same boat. We're not the only district in this situation.
Okay, un, under this, what is the mechanism that does this? Is this an act of law? So in other words, if we wind up with $4 million at the end of the year, 3.6 is the 2% that we'll put in the non-lapsing, and then automatically, does the excess $400,000 get remitted to the town, or is that an act of the BOE, or is this executive order?
No, if, if, if we do, if we do not have the capacity, you know, if we're not allowed to say more than 3.6 in a non-lapsing account, and our balance is larger than that, it would automatically revert back to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Ms., Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lori Charlton. Hi, Doreen. I don't want to jump ahead, but just to make sure I understand the numbers. So right now, we are projecting a savings of 3.3 million, and that's broken out into what I'll, permanent savings, the 3.6, and then deferred expenses of the $459,000. But this, I thought last time we, in that COVID column, or maybe it was somewhere else, I thought we had also discussed additional expenses for summer school. Is that no longer a plan, or can you tell us what happened there?
Doreen, want me to jump on that?
Go ahead.
All right, so thank you, yeah, that, that, thank you for asking that question, because that, that's what I wanted to circle back to. So if you don't mind, I'm just gonna pull up this information. So we've identified, and we continue to, to look at this quite honestly as the, the kind of maze of options unfold in front of us. So yes, we, we anticipate that if we are able to offer a, a physical summer school this year, we want to expand it. This is the summer school particularly for identified special education students. We would want to make that a bigger program than it's been in the past. That would require an additional $675,000, which we have not budgeted. We had it budgeted for our traditional extended school year program, but Mr. Mancusi and his staff have looked at a program that would be longer in number of weeks and longer in the length of the day, and also would expand to include more students. So that's an additional $675,000. That's, there's just one example of the things that we're, we're encountering. The, another one, and I don't, I don't, please know that what that what we're working through, you're gonna hear in my voice, kind of the, the struggle, we're trying to think about the different options. And it's, these are not exclusive options. So for example, even as we look at extending school year for summer school, expanding that program, another option that we're considering that might also be needed in the fall or throughout the year is an extended school day option for both identified special education students and non-identified students, because what we're gonna no doubt encounter when we come back is, as we identify and work with students, we're gonna find the learning gaps that have begun to occur during distance learning, and we're going to have to make up for that. And we're gonna need, the only way to make up a learning gap while school is continuing is to add time to the day. So things like, like that is potentially, because we're gonna have to provide transportation with that as well, adds in, excuse me, one second, about $650,000. So these are the things that, that are requiring staffing, transportation beyond the year. We've talked about, I think, last time we were together, I talked about the need for, because we're planning now again for the possibility of being out of school again, additional computers to go one-to-one in grade three through five. That's another $254,000. So these are the things that we're looking at as we process different situations that come up. And I tell you this, because, you know, our, our interest is being as transparent with you as possible about the struggles that we're having. I will give you one more example. On Monday, the Executive Director and I were meeting, and we discussed the issue of contact tracing. And as, as the state expands its contact tracing program, we expect that we're gonna have our students and staff further identified who are gonna have to go into quarantine. For students who go into quarantine, you know, we're gonna have to continue to provide educational services for them. So we don't, again, we don't know how many that will be. We don't know what grades they'll be at, but we don't have staff, our, our staff are either gonna be working, if we're on distance learning, it's one thing. We can accommodate those students. But if we're physically back in school, how are we gonna be continuing to provide instruction for students who are out of school? It's gonna require a homebound situation, and we don't have staffing levels for that. So th, these are things that, if we're all of us, are continuing to evolve, and we're continually trying to address. So yes, there's a, there's, there's funding that we're going to need beyond.
Okay, so there's funding.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
There's funding. I'm sorry. So there's funding that you will need under any of these scenarios, but you have, unlike the last projection, you haven't quantified what that is because these are all, this is a fluid situation.
Very, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for that, and.
Can I just clarify something?
It's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Moncel. You, you certainly can. I just want people to identify themselves for the.
I'm sorry, I'm Doreen Moncel. The difference is, the reason why it's not on the projection is because those are additional needs in the future, next, you know, next year. They were not part of this year's budget. So those are new dollars for new, new situations that have come up since the pandemic. The, the projection only includes deferred expenses for items that were in this year's budget that we, for one reason or another, weren't able to do because of the pandemic. So both numbers are, you know, represent needs. It's just a matter of whether they were in this budget or they were not even thought of in next year's budget.
Thank you, Ms. Moncel. Ms. Charlton, any further questions?
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dewitt was next, Mr. Dewitt, and then Mr. Tistani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. I want to follow up on Mr. Bateson's question about the mechanics of the, of the non-lapsing account, right? So now that we're in a possible situation where we might cap out, and there might be more money, I would expect that the MOU, whatever that MOU says, would very specifically say a couple of things. So if we as a board decide that, well, maybe we don't want to go to the cap, maybe we'll go to 3.5 only. I think the MOU, and I guess we need the town attorney to help us out with this, but the MOU should very specifically say, here's the amount that we are, that we want to put in the non-lapsing account, right, right up to the cap, and then very specifically say everything else would then return to the town. So I, I think that's, I think that answers Mr. Bateson's question, but I'd feel a lot better if we just said that out loud, that, those details would be handled in the MOU.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Tistani?
I just wanna thank you, Mr. Chairman, just have a follow-up.
I'm sorry, Jack, Jack just identified herself.
Yeah, sorry, Jack Tistani. Just have a quick follow-up to Ms. Charlton's line of questioning. With regard to some of these expenditures, are, are any of these, could any of these factor into this non-lapsing account to, will it, will it deduct from that? I'm just trying to make sure we're, where the accounting for, for these charges is gonna be levied.
Doreen, and then I want to follow up.
Okay, now, Doreen Moncel, the deferred expenses are included in the balance. So column two is the, is the total projected balance of the 3.36, and that's broken down between column four and five. So it's, it's included.
So you're talking about just everything that, in terms of the expenses, even the have you projected, can you project in terms of a percentage, what you could have in, in terms of unforeseen expenses? Some of what you were discussing earlier, so is that, but is that sort of factored in here somehow?
Unforeseen expenses for next year that Mr. Cummings went, went through?
Yeah, and the summer school projections and the special ed program, and is, is any of that, I, I guess we're still gonna be under the cap though, correct? I guess that's my point.
Well, those needs would be for next year, and these are funds, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I, thank you, that's a great question, Mr. Tistani, thank you. My coming Superintendent. As I understand this, I understand the question and what Ms. Moncel is saying, the concern we'd have is dependent on the reduction that would be given to us by, you know, applied to us by the Board of Finance. It would depend, obviously, then, on how much money out of this three-point, this current 3.3 million, 3.4 million, we'd be able to put towards those 2021 expenses. So that's, that's our concern. It is, you know, I've stated before, we've stated throughout our budget presentation, we brought forward a very tight budget. We don't have space in this. It was, you know, primarily driven by salary increases. We had very few new positions. In fact, we're, we're very short. We've maintained our, we're both, our budget at FTE this year. So we're running a tighter ship, and we intend to make it tighter. My concern is that if, depending on the, on the depth of a reduction, what funds would be left for these unanticipated expenses? That's our, that's our concern from the Board of Ed's side.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Vitale for a follow-up. Ms. Vitale?
Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Ed, and that is really coming back to my opening statements, why the Board, while being sensitive to the financial challenges we're facing as a town, we're not ready to take any actions to reduce the approved budget, because if we're having these discussions, we are identifying more costs, not less. So until we know more, we're just really hoping to hold on to as much of the education dollar as we can, and I appreciate the Board's openness to have been the discussion about this non-lapsing account.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Ms. Marmian?
Thank you, Sheila Marmian. I'm curious, this is a question for the Superintendent. Because so much next year is unknown, and in, in terms of whether or not the kids will be consistently in school, whether or not some kids will need to be quarantined, have you been working with other town superintendents in Connecticut to share resources or to look at an approach? Because we may not have the staff in Fairfield, for example, to do online teaching for kids who might be in quarantine. Is there any discussion about sharing resources or staff from a, just from a resource and, and cost savings perspective?
Thank you, that, my coming Superintendent. I think right now, the discussions among the superintendents are on where they are standing in the budget process with everyone feeling right now that they're in a very similar position to Fairfield, that they're going to be seeing cuts and not, not quite sure what they're gonna have to bear. I will tell you that there are plenty of private providers out there who would be glad to come in and take this on, but that's gonna cost us probably additional dollars. So we're looking at every option, but the, the region, as it were, has not yet gotten to a discussion about where we might be able to share resources.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Turning it over to the Board, Mr. Walsh. Uh, turning it over to the Board, Mr. Walsh.
Uh, Mr. Cummings or whoever else will come and ask this. Uh, do we have any?
It's Jim, right? It's Jim Walsh?
It's Jim Walsh, yeah. Do we have any proposed legislation to look at or is that being developed?
Mr. Walsh, are you referring to the, to the non-lapsing account?
Yes.
Um, I believe Ms. Vitale can speak to that. I believe she shared some language with the town attorney.
I also have the statute. If someone wants me to read it, it's John Matola speaking.
Okay. I do, uh, all right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Vitale, but now that Mr. Walsh brings it up, I do believe there was language that we reviewed in our last meeting unless it has changed.
The statute has not changed, um, so that language is still the same. Um, in terms of the MOU, if that's the question, we had some just very preliminary discussions. I had forwarded some sample language from other districts that have these accounts to Mr. Brown, um, and the town attorney. And just some rudimentary, elementary language for the Board of Ed's suggestion having this be sort of a COVID crisis, um, fund to cover deferred things that could not be done in fiscal year 20. That $500,000, that's getting deferred to the future, as well as any unanticipated expenses that were caused by COVID-19, such as an extended school year, an extended school day for general education, the need for additional curriculum, professional development, additional maintenance that might be required to bring kids back into school, um, additional technology. But we have not gone any further in terms of what the exact language of an MOU would look like to the town if we wanted to move this forward. The Board of Ed did meet and voted that, um, that Mr. Cummings and I bring this forward to you and to have this discussion. So we are open to, to review your suggestions, um, and thoughts on this. And I'm sorry, Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Ed, I didn't say that at the beginning, so I'll say it at the end.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Um, Mr. Walsh, you have follow up or Ms.? Yes. Mr. Matola, do you have? Okay.
Just, I'm sorry, Jim. John Matola and Mr. Walsh, on the, a couple of things on the statute, just, so when we, we were with the Board of three or four weeks ago, we had a statute sent to us that was, it wasn't the right statute. And then Superintendent Cummins sent us the correct one like the next day, I think it, it is. And we got that, I think, on April 15th. So look at your email on it to the Board members. And the statute's very clear about, um, what the monies in the lapsing account can be used for. And it's, it, it basically said that the monies can be used for, um, uh, educational purposes and each such expenditure shall be authorized by the local Board of Education for such towns. So, I mean, I appreciate what the Board is doing with respect to being very specific. I don't think you have to do that, but that's up to the Board. Um, but I just wanted to make that clear. And if, if, if members want to read the statute, it was sent back out to us on April 15th is the date. And thank you, Mr. Brown.
And thank you, Mr. Matola. Uh, Mr. Walsh, back to you.
I guess my concern is that it really comes down to how the MOU is written because we're talking about a little over $3.3 million. And I don't think I'm just comfortable just throwing that to the Board of Ed to do whatever they want with it. I understand that they have extra expenses. The one I've heard about is the 675 for the spent summer school program, which I totally understand. Um, Ms. Vitale just went over a list of some other things, um, that thinks she would want to be able to spend it on. Do we have a list of those expenses and what your estimates are for those? Ms. Vitale?
Vitale, um, Chair of the Board of Ed. And again, these are just a laundry list of, of what ifs when school reopens. And being those plans are still being developed, I do not have specifics. Um, we don't know, you know, what it's going to look like and what requirements are going to be suggested from a public health issue. Are kids going to need to wear masks? Staff going to need to be aware of masks? Do they need to have, have their temperature taken? Um, there's a lot of unknowns with this still. Um, and that was just, as I said, starting language for an MOU. I think for maintenance, I bring up cleaning, just if there's going to be cleaning protocols that's coming out from the Health Department that the Board of Ed will need to follow. Those are things that we did not plan for and we did not budget for, but these additional funds could cover. And we look forward to, as Mr. Matola said, I appreciate the, the statute does give us a lot of flexibility, but I understand your concern and really looking to create language that we are all comfortable with, realizing that there's still a lot of unknown. So working from a place of trust here, um, and again, you know, really open to suggestions and feedback from you and from, from staff on this. Thank you.
Hi, this is Rob Mancusi, the Director of Special Education. If I could just speak for one moment. Um, in addition to the additional expenses on top of the extended school year services of $675,000, we put together a draft proposal, um, for an extended school day once the kids return to school or assuming the students can return to school in the fall, two days a week for 20 weeks. And that would be an estimated cost of $647,000 in addition to the ESY. And then there was an additional 200 and I think $30,000 for an extended day program for two days a week for 20 weeks for, um, you know, struggling regular ed students who are missing out on services because of the closure.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Yeah. Hold on, we're, we're all, we're starting to call out and I can't have that. So let's just.
I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right, Mr. Mancusi. Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Jim Walsh, um, to Mr. Mancusi. Thank you for, um, your comments. Um, could you get us that budget in a chance?
Yes, I can.
Together. Thank you. Uh, okay. I guess the question I have is that there's going to be some additional costs, which I understand. And we don't know what some of them are. So you're, we're talking about, you, you're talking about putting together some numbers and putting some money away for some things that are unforeseen. It also apparently seems to be, and I think we just got to put this on the table, um, put some money towards, some of this money towards expenses for next, that are in next year's budget that we might cut to be able to restore them in some way. Is that what we're also talking about?
Who wants to take that question?
I mean, unless I'm mistaken, unless, this is Jim Walsh, unless I'm completely mistaken and that's not what we're talking about.
I, Mr. Cummings?
He's muted.
Yeah. Uh, my hope would be tomorrow, uh, of where we are right now with some of these expenses so that you can have that. Um, I think to your second question, the question of, uh, that's not something that, um, uh, I think that's something that the Board of, we're understanding the Board of Finance is considering. We're not going to bring that forward as our consideration, but I certainly, I certainly understand that the Board of Finance is considering how this might work, the, these, uh, savings, as it were, could, could work that way.
Yeah.
Mr. Walsh?
I guess I'm trying to get it out of the table because I, while I understand that there will be increased costs and we can talk about a budget for that and a list of things and put that into an MOU, how that would work and how you'd come to us and tell us about what those were and, you know, develop some trust about that, which I don't think will be a problem at all. Um, I, I think that out of the $3.3 million savings and the difficult year the town is going to be going through, the second part of what I'd asked needs to be discussed and, um, to be used, to be quite honest with you.
I would agree with Mr. Walsh. We have a balance here we have to try and figure out within a week really is, we may not get all the details of an MOU. Um, we have to, I'd like to talk to the town attorney about the non-lapsing account some more and with members of our Board and figure how we can balance off potential reductions in the Board of Ed budget with the savings minus the additional expenses, I get it, for the, um, for the Board of Ed from this year due to COVID. It's something we have to, we, we have to get some numbers and we have to at least get close to what this would look like. Um, so with that said, I'll turn it to Mr. Testani, had his hand up first and then Mr. Matola.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jack Testani. Just a quick question for Mr. Mancusi, you know, maybe Mr. Cummings. I heard somewhere something about teachers with an extended workday. I'm just curious, has that been negotiated? Is that already been, uh, talked about? Have teachers agreed to summer school, uh, in addition to the extended workday? I'm just curious where, you know, once we start talking about that, does that confuse any potential pre-negotiated contracts?
Um, my coming superintendent. Uh, Mr. Mancusi, each year, again, extended school year is an ongoing program. This year it would be expanded. Uh, I know Mr. Mancusi has begun to have conversations with his staff around that. There are, um, negotiated rates, uh, that we, uh, have used in the past for, for those, for those, essentially an hourly rate. We would also, um, have to look at, um, we're budgeting on an estimated number now for the extended school day as well. So while we've not had formal negotiations with our unions, we're able to work off past practices in planning those.
Yeah. And, and this, this is Rob Mancusi. Am I unmute?
No.
Okay. All right. This is Rob Mancusi, um, Special Ed Director. We, we do feel that we can staff, uh, a six-week summer week, uh, summer school program if we are in session this summer. Um, we are still waiting for guidance from the State of Connecticut on ESY programming this summer. There is also an impromptu meeting of Fairfield County Special Ed Directors tomorrow to discuss this concern, but we are waiting for guidance from the state. We have done an initial polling of staff are interested in working a six-week summer school program and, and we believe we can staff a six-week summer week, summer program.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi.
This is Jack Testani. Again, just curious, will that require any additional separate funding or, or payments for those teachers?
That's all, um, budgeted in terms of when we budget for summer school is salaries and that additional 675 that is also built into that. So the, the answer is yes. There is salary for, for staffing, um, as part of the overall cost for ESY programming as well as the overall cost for an extended day program, should that be implemented when school reopens. And like Mr. Cummings said, there is that contract rate that's built into the contract, the hourly rate.
Thank you, Mr. Mancusi. All right. Thank you, Mr. Testani. Uh, Mr. Matola?
Thank you. So I just, just want to, maybe we have to have a discussion probably Thursday about this. So let's kind of set the scene here. So the Board of Ed had a budget for this current year, 2020. And because, uh, they had to close, there's been significant savings. Some money that was budgeted to the Board of Education for 2020 that they haven't been able to use because of the closure situation. I, I don't understand why, and, and maybe I'm misinterpreting some other members' comments here and maybe we have to have a discussion on it. I don't understand why some of that money can't be used for the next fiscal year to mitigate the current dire situation. The statute, the lapsing statute allows for that if you read the statute. I don't think we have to limit that 3.2 or 3.6 million dollars to something like COVID-related expenses. So that's how I, 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 I think you use it for COVID-related expenses, but I also think we can use some of that money under the law to help mitigate what's going on right now. The statute's very clear that the money can be used for educational purposes. And so, you know, we want to save the taxpayers' money this year, I get it, but we have a chunk of money that we can use to help mitigate the damage that this would, that a significant cut would go to the Board of Education. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. And I, I don't, uh, I don't want to handcuff the Board of Education on a MOU saying you can only use some of this money for certain specific things. I don't think that's fair to the Board of Education. And it has to be a trust between our department, our finance board and the Board of Education on that. So that's kind of how I'm seeing it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matola. I think, yeah, we all have opinions on this. And Mr. Walsh has his hand raised.
I just think a memorandum of understanding is going to have to be developed and, um, sure, there's going to be some expenses for COVID stuff and some stuff we can't anticipate, but I'd like to get a list of things so we're all on the same page. I mean, what I don't want to see is that, you know, if we fully fund it and not have any explanation of it, that programs that weren't even built into the current, uh, budget we're looking at would be added. And that teachers, you know, oh, we have all this money. Let's hire 25 additional teachers for programs because now we have the money to do it. Um, what I'm trying to say is that some of the money, if we had to make a cut to this Board of Ed budget because of the year we're looking forward to, yeah. I mean, I, I would understand that, you know, we'd all go in with it with our eyes wide open and we'd say some of the money could be, to use to offset that, to help the taxpayer be able to make a cut bigger than we thought we might be able to. But, um, you know, I think we, I would like to see, and we don't have a lot of time to do this. I would like to see some type of budget for what we, you know, some budget for the, the extra cost because of COVID stuff and verse the other side of it as well. So at least that would help me go in with my eyes a little bit more wide open into this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I just want to say that, um, and Ms. Vitale and I and, and Mr. DeWitt have traded, uh, some emails in regards to other towns that have a non-lapsing account and they all seem to have some agreement with the Board of Finance, whether it's an MOU or a policy. But there is something in writing that just covers everybody. You know, when you have something in writing, basically what it does is it, it covers everybody. Right? And so everyone's on, understands what the rules of the game are. Mr. Matola? And then I'll go to you, Ms. Vitale.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree with that. And Mr. Walsh, I, I thank you for saying that. I, I would not expect any of this money to be used to start new programs. That certainly would make me upset. Um, and so, and I, I'm, I'm grateful that you said the things that you said and we seem like we're on the same page. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Uh, Ms. Vitale?
Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Ed. Um, I'm really just going back to that place of trust. As Mr. Mancusi said, he can provide you with just some of the breakouts that, of the, of the budget for extended school year. Mr. Cummings has, um, numbers for what it would cost for additional technology. And if there is additional funding and if it is going to be used to possibly offset an additional reduction, the expectation of me, I have some conversations with the staff and with the Board, would be that it would not be to fund new programming, but would really just to move forward the Board of Education budget that was presented that the first selectman, woman and Board of Selectmen used to build their budget and not fund anything new. If any new programming was to be put forward, it would be, I would think, due to the fact of the pandemic, whether or not be a new form of distance learning or needing to create something new to react to yet another crisis.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. I would agree, and I would agree with Mr. Walsh, that we have to get something done pretty quick, like this week. So we're in, um, good shape for next Tuesday. And maybe we can get as much done as we can over the next two days so we have something to discuss on Thursday night as well. Uh, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lori Charlton. Uh, I agree with the comments that were made and Mr. Walsh brought up the obvious point in that I, I think probably all of us had in the back of our mind, even if we didn't say it outright, that this non-lapsing account could be used for really two reasons. One, to offset the impact of any, um, further cut in the budget. And two, to be available for additional expenses for next year. Um, I mean, I'll leave it to the, the Board and Ms. Board of Ed and Mr. Cummings. I just, I, I'm not. I just, I, I'm not sure, um, and maybe just want to push back a little bit on the need to have, you know, some scenarios in front of us in two days. I, I, I don't know what, uh, Mr. Cummings and the Board of Ed think, but there are so many uncertainties. I mean, we could have a further disruption, um, if the virus flares up again. We could have, you know, more distance learning, the variety, and we have no idea at this point. So I think we just have to, um, go forth in, in a manner that, yes, involves trust, but also accountability and regular updating and reporting so that everyone is comfortable with what's being done. And we have a level of accountability to the public. But I, I wonder if really doing a lot of budgeting of, of different scenarios right now. Um, I mean, certainly they could, they could be done to illustrate some different ideas. I, I'm just not sure how we could possibly know at this point, um, you know, what that means. Are we going to have staggered classrooms or different days or, you know, like be out of school for two months? And if this flares up in the winter, et cetera, which would create more savings? So, um, you know, just, I, I throw that out there because I, I, I think that we need to be responsible, but we also need to, you know, give a level of flexibility to the Board of Ed, uh, that's appropriate given the, you know, huge level of uncertainty that is here. So that's, that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Uh, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, uh, I just wanted to follow up on that. My coming superintendent, and I appreciate that comment for a couple, a couple of thoughts. Uh, one, the, the list we will give you, and we will give you a list. Um, I don't want it to be interpreted as, as the final list because of what is a great unknown right now, um, Mr. Mancusi, a couple of them. Mr. Mancusi made a reference to summer school. Where you should know by the end of May, we were told today that we should know by the end of May, uh, what summer school will look like. Will it be physical? Will it be distance learning? Will it be some hybrid model of summer school? Um, so that's going to have an impact on the dollars we can or cannot spend. The other thing that we don't know at this point is what conditions will be set for the return to physical school. So Ms. Vitali made mention of the fact that, um, uh, uh, our temperature is going to have to be taken, uh, when students return to school. Are we going to be going on some type of, uh, dual-day system, an A B system where some kids come on A, some kids come on B day? And in order to maintain social distancing, um, you know, and what will be the consequences of that as we prepare for that? What will be the expended cost for cleaning classrooms at the end of every day? Uh, so the, here's, I promise you, I absolutely promise you, recognizing the, the real concerns that you have, that, um, every dollar we, we would have to spend would be spent on the appropriate things that bind us to the M O U. What I can't say to you is, and I, well, we'll absolutely spend this on an extended school day program when in three weeks I have greater needs than that. So I just, I, I, that's my only concern. To be upfront and honest with you, um, I don't want the list that we send you to be taken as ironclad. I just want you to give some sense of where our thinking is right now with your understanding that this situation, as you well know, is evolving and we're going to have to be responsive to that.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I keep hearing, uh, Mr. Mancusi and some others talk about extended day, and I presume because he brought it up, we were talking about expect extended day for the special education and, um, the program, not, not for the general population, not, not an extended day for the entire school, are we? Yeah, I just want to.
For, for the specialized students, Rob Mancusi, Special Ed Director. For the specialized students who are determined to have regressed over the, the loss of instruction, we have put together a proposal for a two, a twenty-week, two-day-a-week, a twenty-week, two days per week, two hours per day proposal for, um, for, from August to January.
Okay. I'd like to add to that, Mr. Walsh, my coming superintendent. Um, it, it, as Mr. Mancusi said earlier, this also could include regular education students. We are going to have regular education students who have developed learning gaps as a result of distance learning. One of the reasons we want to include them in a distance learning program, uh, excuse me, an extended days program, is to remediate them now so that they're now not identified in the future for special education services. So, uh, I'd like that to be considered as, as trying to be as proactive as possible to address needs when they occur, um, so that we can, uh, prevent, uh, further learning needs down the road.
Um, this is Jim Walsh again. Um, following up on that question that I had, I'm glad, because that was going to be my next question, uh, Mr. Cummings, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, which is, we had spoken at the last meeting about a possible need for you to do additional testing so that you could find out where all students are. Um, or at least you, you were, you were specifically concerned with ones coming out of K one, two, I think, first, second, and kindergarten to make sure that they were on track. And I guess is there still thought that that money would be, some of you'd need money to do that testing? And will you need it for other grades?
Um, no, we're, I was, I appreciate you bringing that back up. What I'm thinking that we would rather rely on than any type of standardized assessment would really be when students return to school, um, having teachers do that work is part of the get, coming back to school work. Um, so a lot of our work can be done with students, one-on-one type of situations, using running records. We already have the STAR assessment in place if we want to use that. But there's, there's a lot of, uh, interpersonal, small group work that teachers can do with students that would be part of the school day and should not cost us additional funding.
Okay. And you had mentioned that the last time about having teachers do it. And you threw out a really rough number by doing a calculation about having maybe teachers come back a couple of days beforehand, do these assessments, um, or maybe it was two or three. I can't remember what, how you did your calculation. Is that still your thought that they would be, you know, the students would be assessed by the teachers? Come back, we'd need to pay them pursuant to their contract for coming back, um, to do that assessment?
No, I'm pulling back on that, really given the uncertainty of, um, our ability to pull kids in during the course of the summer. I think that's so up in the air that I hesitate to budget for it.
Okay. Um, and then one other question, if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd let me, uh, this is Jim Walsh again, is the maintenance and, um, capital expenses that you were going to do on the buildings. You said you might not be able to spend that money because you couldn't get supplies in potentially and things like that. To me, it's important that some of that work still get done because they're town buildings. If something doesn't get done, repair, maintenance and whatever, ultimately the town's responsible for that. Is some of this money going to be still used to that to try to catch up on the maintenance that was really supposed to be done this year but could not get done because of the pandemic?
Um, our commitment is that, is yes. Uh, we, I know that the Board has pledged to hyper, both in the nineteen twenty and the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget on ongoing maintenance projects, um, and even just the, the preventive maintenance programs. So, um, we have to, we have to protect and support our infrastructure. We absolutely have to.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any follow-up? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Munzel, is there anything else on this worksheet that you would like to point out to us? We didn't quite get through it, but maybe with our questions, we, we answered enough.
Dori Munzel. Uh, yeah, I think you, um, regarding this, uh, document, you've gotten everything out of it that you needed to know.
Okay, thank you. So let's, you had sent us other documents for, for us to review. Is there any, are any of these documents something you'd like to, to go over tonight?
Uh, no, I think that they were really responsive to the questions you had. I don't know if there was any questions coming from those.
From the Board? I just have one, I just have a question on health insurance because I'm still a little, I'm still, oh, this is, this is Jim Brown. You know, a little, uh, confused on what the healthcare costs for the Board of Ed will be this year as opposed to what's in the budget and the latest information. And I'm hoping, uh, that you could clear that up.
All right.
Sure, Dori Munzel, yeah. Um, uh, I, I can see why you're confused. So I'm, I'll start from the, uh, from this year's document. On the, on the section, uh, that we just reviewed, um, just to clarify, line eleven, the health insurance number, um, in column one and two of the negative three hundred and forty thousand, that is a budget shortfall for the current year, for nineteen twenty, where it's an, it's a negative number, we're over budget by that amount. Um, that amount was adjusted after rates were received, um, last spring, uh, for this year. For next year, for twenty twenty-one, uh, with the eight hundred thousand dollar cut from the first selectwoman, um, we are about twenty-one thousand dollars over budget at this point. After adjusting for the rates for medical and R X, which we have received, uh, we do not have dental rates yet. Those are unknown. Um, but, but after adjusting for the rate, um, we're about twenty-one thousand over budget with the eight hundred thousand dollar cut. Now, Aon agrees with that. There, you received an email from them. And in the text of the email, they mentioned that variance of twenty-one thousand. Uh, so, so that's where we are right now. Um, as you'll remember, we saw a large shift to family, uh, coverage this year. Uh, there was something like fifty-three, and we had something like seven involuntary losses uh, of coverage. Um, and it is true, I, I also heard comments about that we are premium-based and we don't have to worry about, um, the impact of claims on our budget. That is absolutely true. Um, not, it's not the same situation, uh, as the town where they're self-insured. Um, but we do need to be concerned about changes in levels of coverage. Um, we are in the process of open enrollment right now. Uh, it ends tomorrow, uh, and then we'll need some time to gather all that info to see what our head count will be for, um, for July one, for the start of the school year. Um, but even then, uh, it will, you know, it can continue to change. Um, so right at this point, uh, we are, with a zero room for, uh, changes, um, we could very well see involuntary, you know, additional involuntary losses of coverage um, under the current situation that we're in. And honestly, uh, you know, nine months from now, we may see large increases in family coverage again. Something I think we need to think about. Um, so that's where we're at with, um, health insurance.
So if, if I understand that right, Ms. Munzel, is there's a lot of uncertainty. Things can change and there's concern there. Uh, but right now there is the difference of eight hundred thousand from the original Board of Ed approved budget to what Aon is stating the cost would be. There's an eight hundred thousand dollar difference, or am I, I'm not understanding? Lori, it's not Lori Charlton saying I am not understanding that correctly.
No.
Can I, um, hi, Lori Charlton, can I say it differently, maybe?
Sure.
It sounds, Dori, like the eight hundred thousand dollar cut, if you will, is in fact a, a real savings short by twenty-one thousand dollars?
You got it.
Got it. Okay. So originally, when the cut of eight hundred thousand, we thought that that was not going to, um, um, come to pass because we weren't trying to. Then the rates came in, so that savings is, is real and it's, it's all there. It's just, um, it's only off by twenty-one thousand dollars. So I think if you, if you think about it another way, um, the, the operational cut of the one point four million that was cut, it's really what's flowing through to operations. And tell me if I'm misunderstanding this, is, is six hundred thousand dollars, right? Plus twenty.
Um, that's true, but.
Bar, barring the impact of any census, that barring the impact of changes in coverage that could create the same type of risk that created this three hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit, right?
Right.
That's my concern, right?
Okay.
That three hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit is there because you had a change in the level of coverage, you know, from single to family or, or whatever. That would cause, that caused that. There's a risk that that could happen again. We don't know, particularly in this environment, if spouses lost jobs, et cetera. That could cause a shift to family coverage and that's, um, that's an unknown at the moment.
So, thank you, Ms. Charlton. This is Jim Brown again. That is exactly what I meant, and I said it wrong, apparently. Because no one understood what I meant. But so thank you for putting it in a much more clear way than I did. Okay, very good. Um, Mr. Matola?
Thank you, John Matola. And I can probably look this up myself, but it'll take me too long to figure it out. Do you know, Ms. Munzel, do you recall for fiscal year nineteen, um, did you have a big variance in the, uh, premium cost throughout the year? Did you end up in the hole by the end of the year or was it a wash? Do you, do you have any recollection of that?
Um, I don't remember what the actual, um, final outcome was of the year. But I do know that, so basically this is the one year that we have had a considerable issue. We, we haven't had this issue before.
So this year could be an outlier. This could be an outlier. It, it's an unusual year. Um, a lot of people decided to have kids this year, so maybe that's a good thing. Maybe they won't have as many next year. Um, but who knows? There's not a heck of a lot to do. So, um, thank you. I don't have any other further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Testani?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. It's Jack Testani. Just a quick question on the, on the dental. Do you have any idea when you might get an update on that? Usually that's could perceive to be a savings. Has it been in the past? Just wondered, wondered if you had an idea of a timeframe on that. Thank you.
Uh, Dori Munzel, yes, they, they think they said, uh, June. Um, so it would be in the effective date of, uh, October one. Um, but they won't come out with it until June. They're working on some kind of enhancements. They talked about, they, they haven't, they're not ready yet to release rates until June timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Any other questions about health insurance? Any other questions on the worksheet? Then are there any other questions at all for the Board of Ed tonight? Mr. DeWitt?
Oh, just to, just to thank you to, as usual, to Ms. Munzel for portraying the information in a, uh, very user-friendly format that apparently only our chairman can't figure out on his own.
Uh, thank you, Mr. DeWitt. You won't be recognized for the rest of the night. Ms. Vitali?
Thank you again for, thank you again for having us. Christina Vitali, Chair of the Board of Education. And again, just to, I, you know, we've been talking so much about all of the unanticipated expenses and savings from COVID nineteen. I just want to bring it back to the proposed budget, um, of the Board of Education that was unanimously approved. Hopefully, we will all be back in school, that these kids will not have to go out. I'm still being, um, optimistic on that and that we can move a lot of initiatives forward. The budget was very lean to begin with. Um, there's not a lot of room for, you know, defined savings for unanticipated programming, unanticipated, unanticipated maintenance projects. So I just thank you again for considering the non-lapsing account and really to look through the budget through just non-COVID eyes at some of the programming. If you have any additional questions, to please follow up with the Board or the Superintendent. Um, and I want to thank Mr. Cummings and the executive directors for all their work on this. And thank you to the Board of Finance for just doing your due diligence and being willing to have these conversations with us.
Thank you, Ms. Vitali. Thank you for the work you do. Thank you to the Board of Ed for being here tonight. And, um, I'm sure we will be talking before next Tuesday. So have a good rest of the evening. It's only eight thirty. We have most of it left.
Take care now. Thank you.
Take care now, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we are on item number seven. The review and discuss information presented to the Board of Finance from H and H Hooker and Holcomb from April twenty-one, twenty twenty budget hearing. So we have with us the Joint Retirement Investment Board Chair, Mr. Brian Vehi, Mr. Vehi, thank you for being with us, and Stefan Chakara from Hooker and Holcomb, who was here with us on that April twenty-first, and Mr. Vehi and I have talked a couple of times, traded some emails, and I know Mr. Vehi has been in discussions with the finance department at the town, and we thought it would be a good idea to have him uh come before us and discuss the Oped and pension and the retiree benefits as he sees it from his perspective, and perhaps a little bit of update and clarification uh with the presentation from H and H. So, Mr. Vehi, I'll turn it over to you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can everyone hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent, great. Um, yes, I just uh am coming before the board, and I just wanted to um express uh an apology, uh somehow, the number that we are responsible for as the Joint Retirement Investment Board, which is the two thousand nineteen actuarial evaluation and presentation, that, that number was reviewed back in our board meeting, or, yeah, our board meeting on um February twenty-sixth with uh Stefan from Hooker and Holcomb, and uh the number that we uh arrived at for the ADAC, which included a mortality table, which I believe you folks have also had explained to you, um, did not get included in the number that you actually uh received and have been using up until it became aware to, um, to us last month at our last, uh, our April board meeting, so that's when I became aware that um there's a one point eight million dollar differential, and I sent an email at that time and asked to clarify, so that's, that's why I'm here, and I'm also here to um answer any questions that the Board of Finance might have uh on the whole actuarial process, and I asked our actuary to be here as well, because um it's not an easy topic, and especially at eight-thirty-five, when people are already starting to glaze over, we might, we might put y'all to sleep, but anyway, we're here to serve and answer questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vehi, and it's eight-thirty-five, it's way early for us. Uh, Ms. Charlton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lori Charlton, Mr. Vehi, thanks for being here. I just want to clarify what you're saying, we had a brief discussion about this mortality table at our, it wasn't our last Board of Finance meeting, at, at the Board of Finance meeting when we reviewed the uh actuarial information, and I thought we heard at that time that that was something on the horizon that was going to impact our liability next year, but you're saying that your board discussed it, can you just clarify that? When, did, did we hear that wrong at the last meeting? What, what exactly happened there?
So, uh, on the timeline is that um the actuary does their report uh towards the tail end, and this is the, once again, it's the act, the pension valuation report that they're, that we as uh the, the trust, the pension trust actually funds, and we have to report back to the town and the Board of Finance, you guys can budget, that begins, I believe, at the end of last year, finish their work, um, and we get a, a final presentation, which I think is very similar to the one that you guys saw, I, 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 I'm not trivia, I wasn't at your meetings, uh, but it essentially goes through um everything that's happened in the past year, so how the assets performed, what the liabilities look like, and uh this year was a unique year in that last February, two thousand nineteen, a new actuarial table uh came out, uh called Pub two thousand ten, uh, unique in that it's the first one that was produced that actually is for public service employees, um, everything to this date has more been private, and we tweak stuff so that it most closely matches what we, we have, and uh Stefan, if you're on, correct me if I, if I get any of this uh off, but I thi, I think I'm still safe here. Um, we are using like a two thousand fourteen table with modifications currently, um, Stefan at Hooker and Holcomb per their standards are required to inform us of the new actuarial table. He did uh told us its genesis and what its impact is, not just for us, but pretty much for all public plans across the United States, and um, and what it is, is public employees live longer, so we actually have more of a liability than we've been recording, um, and larger plans have already sort of seen that, uh, because they're such a big statistical base, they can do their own actuarial assumptions, smaller plans like us, we can't fine-tune like that, so this is very valuable for us to sort of see what our liability really is. So, um, he presented it, and there was uh spirited discussion, our meeting, and I just want to clarify, our meeting uh was properly noticed, but evidently, the, the vote that we held was not properly noticed per FOI, and so we're having a special meeting uh next Monday, for all interested, who'd like to tune in and see us vote on um accepting uh the, what we did back in, in February, which was accept these, these tables and um, and the number involved, and uh, so yeah, so we did that, and usually, this is my tenth year, um, that number just goes, and it's, I, we don't, I don't follow the budget process, perhaps I, I should, or whoever succeeds me should keep a closer eye on how that number makes its way, um, just somebody, uh, I think on our board, became aware that, that wasn't the number that we had used, and we asked Caitlin, and she said, no, it's actually the, the non-Pub two-ten number that's, that's out there, and so that um caused some discussion in my email, so that's how I'm here tonight.
To summarize, Ben, so you're, you're saying your board voted to adopt the new mortality table, which increased the town's liability, but that new mortality table did not ultimately get incorporated in the numbers that were presented to us?
If, uh, yes, my understanding is that, um, so my calculations, it's about an eleven point nine um, uh, number that you'd be seeing for the combined town employee and police and fire, um, and I think you actually are seeing the ten point one, which is the, would have been the number using um our existing tables.
But, but Ms. Charlton, no, no, we have to be, we have to, we have to verify something. It wasn't a vote, it wasn't a vote because it was not published, so we can't, we can't call it a vote until Mr. Vehi has his special meeting next week sometime, and then it's a, a vote that can be recognized, but right now, it's not a recognized vote. I understand Mr. Vehi's intent, and, but it's just, to be clear, um, the tables that we're discussing, the Pub two-ten, right, tables, was not voted on at all, okay?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, can I, um, Lori Charlton again, I just, uh, thank you for pointing out that um, uh, that, the specifics of that, maybe I uh am wording it incorrectly, I guess what I'm trying to understand, it was the, was it the intention of the pension board that, you, the pension board believed that these tables had been adopted and were included in the, in the liability and the budgeted expense that was to be forwarded, that was to be included in our budget, but that ultimately didn't happen, so where was the disconnect?
Mr. Vehi, go ahead. Brian, go ahead.
I'd just like to clarify that the meeting did take place, a vote did take place, I've not seen an FOI challenge saying that it actually didn't take place, we are holding a special meeting, so that I can't even, that we won't, shouldn't even see an FOI challenge, but it happened, and there's actually a witness, which was the actuary that's on the phone, so while you can, we can argue semantics, uh, and no one challenged it or brought this awareness till, you know, that they're gonna, and, and once again, I actually haven't seen an official FOI challenge, but folks have noticed that perhaps we would want to go back and, and redo a special meeting, which we're doing, but yes, everyone left that meeting uh believing that that number was going to be used.
And I'm sorry, I'll just, I'll yield to others, um, it's Lori Charlton again, but we, unless I missed it, and I apologize, but I, I thought I recall asking questions about this during the meeting, this, that wasn't disclosed to us, as I recall, um, Stefan, I, I don't remember hearing that the board voted or didn't vote, or had an incorrect vote, I'm, I'm still trying to understand, um, was this an error?
Stefan Chakara, that question was for you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, they, they talked about, that's why when I presented the results to you on pages twelve and thirteen of the presentation, I showed side-by-side both sets of tables, and both ADACs developed, um, and we stressed more the baseline, not knowing how the board was gonna go, or how the finance board was gonna, what they were gonna go forward with, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had the numbers that were talked about at both meetings, so the, you do have the results of bo, both tables in front of you, or you had them in that, that meeting that I presented last couple weeks ago.
Okay, it's, sorry, Lori Charlton again, I apologize, I don't recall that being presented to us as an alternative that we were supposed to be choosing from, though, I thought that uh the way it was presented was, we had a set of numbers, and that that mortality table was sort of a heads-up for the future, and I do recall even asking about that because we had a number of headwinds potentially coming our way, the mortality table, a decline in our investments uh due to the market, and, you know, potentially, you know, having to look at the discount rates, so I, um, unless I'm misremembering, I, that's, that's not my recollection, I will um allow others to ask questions, thank you.
Okay, I just want to go to uh Ms. Kupchak, she's asking to chime in here, Ms. Kupchak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanna, um, my understanding of this is that this is a, um, pension board is recommending that the town do this, because we're talking about a separate board that isn't part of the administration voting to have the town take on almost a two million dollar liability, when it's my understanding, excuse me, that um maybe less than fifty percent of communities have adopted these mortality rates, and that they don't necessarily have to be adopted in this year, that this was a recommendation to the town. Am I mis, misunderstanding that, Mr. Vehi? Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Vehi?
Excellent, I was just trying to put a chat thing in, that was just a waste of my time. Uh, Madam Select Woman is, is correct, and it's a great point, so as I prefaced my um opening statement is, uh, our mandate as trustees is to present that, have that report done, and present it, and quite honestly, uh, sometimes we talk about discount rates and other stuff, but at the end of the day, uh, the attention-getter is the ADAC, which is um the actuarial determined employee contribution, which the town uh asks to pay, and I think um, uh, Stefan at Hooker and Holcomb, you know, every year, he explains how the pension earns its, or, how, how the contributions get put in, and the employees put theirs in, and how we eventually pay these things out, but yeah, we don't um have a checkbook, um, our role is just to oversee the assets and liabilities, and um monitor them, and make a recommendation, and to uh Madam Select Woman's point, our original vote was uh rather cut and dry, and said, you know, you know, we, we voted to take the new Pub two-ten and resulting ADAC numbers, and that's what came out of it, um, to reflect uh this nuance that, that was brought up, is when we uh have our meeting on Monday, the, the proposed um language would be that same thing, we, we would adopt the Pub two-ten and the resulting ADAC, but we'd also um would like to publicly acknowledge the fact that uh the town is in a, you know, unprecedented uh fiscal position, and we understand that, you know, things may not be funded in toto uh in this fiscal year, and it may extend over a period at the governance of, you know, as the bodies decide, which we can only, like I said, give our two cents, and, and it's nice for us, because we just have one thing to look at, you guys, after sitting through this, meaning tonight, just a piece of all the different things that uh the town has to juggle when, when uh fulfilling all their commitments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you, um, I'm sure there's quite a few questions, I know I have a few, but I'll go to the board, and I'm gonna start with Mr. Bateson before I miss him, Mr. Bateson?
Brian, thanks for being here, Brian, thanks for being here, it's Jason, I, I want to, I want to add that my recollection matches Lori's, that we did hear this presentation, we heard about the mortality rate, I remember my position was, is, I, I, I recall, from my recollection, you guys were considering it, and my feeling was, is I hoped you would adopt it for next year. My concern now is, uh, maybe to Brenda or Jim Baldwin, if, I don't know what the authoritative body is in this matter, if the board goes back and adopts this mortality rate, what's before the Board of Finance, does that mean that the ADAC has now increased one point eight million, and we're underfunding it? Does that mean we're bound to that actuarial analysis? Uh, I, I'm more looking at it from the rating agency's point of view, now there's a document out there that has been approved by the Town of Fairfield, and now we're not funding to it. I, I just want to make sure that the semantics of this are matching, you know, I, I, I'd really like the board to delay that vote till next year, Brian, I, I would, I, I understand what you're getting at, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about how this appears now, if somebody can answer that.
So I think, Mr. Bateson, thank you, I think that that's like the crux of the matter here right now, and what we're facing, because we've always funded the R, right, and that's why, according to this older table, you know, the, the table that we're in now, what might not be in a week, we're eighty-six point eight-five percent funded, correct? Because we've always done the right thing, and our intent is to do the right thing, but now we have kind of this hanging over us, and it's um, it's just a tough situation in this budget year, to add one point eight million dollars to the budget to cover the ADAC, and however, it seems like that would have been a recommendation if the vote had officially taken place, but I know Mr. Baldwin uh wants to chime in here, so I'd like to turn it over to our town attorney, Mr. Baldwin?
Uh, Jim Baldwin, uh, just by way of background, I believe, I did some uh looking into the last time this was done, and I've also spoken uh at length with uh, with Brian Vehi, and he and I both understand that in the past, something like this came to the town's attention around November, December of the year prior to, you know, just preceding the budget season, and that it would be vetted, it would be discussed, and ultimately considered and baked into the the budget, or not baked into the budget, as the case may be, of the administration. In this situation, it was, that was not done. This was presented, or the attempt to present it was done in late February, in the midst of the budget season, just prior to the Board of Selectmen voting. And so that, I think that's at the crux of the issue here, is the timing. It's the timing when this was presented, the timing when it was, you know, considered to be part of the budget or not part of the budget. And in that sense, I think that it's, it's, it's late. Now, that's my opinion, not a legal opinion necessarily, but one which is based on what happened in the past, but it does take into consideration the budget process of the town. And I think that that is the appropriate process for something like this to follow. And in that sense, I don't think it is appropriate to insert it now into, into the budget process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Bateson has a follow-up to his question. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Ed Bateson, thanks, Jim. That, that kind of matches what I'm thinking, too, that we do have a, there is a timeline. My only concern is now that I'm gonna assume next Monday, there's gonna be a document out there. I don't know what the authoritative power of the Joint Retirement Board is, now that they can go back and tell the actuaries to change the report, and now we have something out there that I'm supposed to be funding to, but I'm not. I just don't want that to be counted against us. So that's my concern. To Brian, this dollar amount, this 1.8 million, this only affects the pension, not OPEB, right?
Mr. Vahie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brian Vahie, you are correct in that the mortality table is for retire, the retirement mortality, it's not connected to other retiree benefits. So it only affects the contribution from, for the police and fire and town employees, and moves them both up by about 900,000 for this year. And I, if the chairman would like, I can chime in on rating agency impact and optics and the like.
Sure, please do.
So I think the important thing, and forgive me, I'm not, I'm sure many people already know this, rating agencies don't, they don't do spot analysis. They, and I'm speaking purely on the pension side, but I know that this is how they rate municipalities in general. They look at a continuum, and, and really, if not just for municipalities, also for companies. So they really look for a pattern of behaviors and precedent. And it's only when they see deviations that concern them, that's when they, they put people on negative watch, which, you know, we should not, not, not anticipate that nor want it, but they only do that when you do things over a period of time that continually sort of change the established rating or behavior that you've already set up as a municipality. So I understand that this, I sympathize, or empathize, actually empathize would be the correct wording on the surprise, I guess it is, to the administration. This was their first, as Mr. Baldwin said, this was their first go around with this process. And I will point out to the body that, so that we don't, I will, I will be gone this time next year, but if this does not happen again, we're gonna move up this entire process, so that our number is done by December, so that there's no, you know, we're out of the picture and you have it and this won't happen again. But anyway, going back to the rating agency thing, they look at acceptance of discount rate, and I think Stefan showed a great picture to show sort of where we sit. We sit at the median for discount rate. And if you look historically, we've always been at the forefront, not, not, not way out there, but we've always been on the conservative side of discount rate. So we're not aggressive there. Mortality table, this doesn't come up very often. You know, this came out in February 2019. This is, quite honestly, the first valuation where it's really become available for us to adopt. And just like with our amortization, our, our payment method, I'm just going through all the different assumptions in our pension calculations, we always have sat either in the middle or on the conservative side and sort of established a pattern of behavior, a prudent behavior, I might add. And the fact that we, like the chairman has stated, that we're at 86% is a testament to the town's commitment. And I, rating agencies look at that and say, this is not municipality that we have to worry about, that they're pushing the envelope, or shifting stuff, or kicking the can down the road, or whatever euphemism you'd like to use. This is a municipality that attempts to do the correct thing. And to answer Mr. Bateson's issue, there's not a, while we have had a great track record of funding everything, in my lifetime, I've not seen what we're currently going under, going through economically. We, we will not be the only municipality, I'm sure, to not fund the, Mr. Chairman, I used the word ARC, you're dating yourself, but it's sort of a lot easier than ADEC. I'm sure we're not gonna be alone, and we've already, my first call was to point out the error, and also to try and come before this body to help parse through, because we're not, we're not gonna change. We're, we're not, I mean, the vote has yet, is, still will happen, so you can all chime, you can all attend. But I used to be a betting man for a living, and I do not see us rescinding that. It doesn't make sense from the pattern of behavior and the prudent sense of the word. And also, I might add that, I don't know where we're gonna end up at the end of fiscal year investment-wise. We looked great in December. We're down, which I think I'm coming for a spotting next month, but, you know, I think we're down roughly $40 million. But I mean, that impact is gonna be, or one-fifth of that impact is going to show up in next year's number. And also, if you don't adopt this mortality table, the liability doesn't go away. So you're, you're going to get a, you're gonna get that and then some, and then the investment thing. So it's good that you kind of know what your number is now and strategize, and we start to try and, I think, you folks are gonna do whatever you do. Like I said, I don't have the power of the purse, but I think it's wise to put on the number, show the rating agency that you know what the true number is, and be reflected in the CAFR. And we do what we're gonna do. And as Mr. Bateson asked, I mean, we have 11.8 in the pension side, and I think it's 10-ish on OPEB. And I thought maybe that, we've already been going out for longer than I thought, but I thought that a lot more of the discussion would sort of be around potential solutions or impacts on, you know, trying different things than some of the stuff we've already been discussing. And that's what I would like to talk about.
I think we'll get there. I think we'll get there, Brian. Thank you. But there are a few other questions, and I want to get around to them. And I do, you know, Ms. Marmee, and I'll get to you. I just want to have, Ms. Kupchak has a follow-up. I just want to give her the opportunity to do that. Ms. Kupchak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have the rating agency phone call, which was a long phone call with our funding people and our financial people in the room, and it never came up regarding mortality tables. What, I did have a conversation with Matt, and I have always trouble pronouncing his last name, Borrella, he said to not, to not fund your pensions is a big no-no. That will cause a problem. So again, you're, you're saying that these were just brought out in 2019, and less than 50% of the towns are adopting them. I don't know what the urgency is to adopt them now, that could potentially make us look irresponsible. So I am concerned about it, obviously. I mean, we're managing a town under a, probably, probably the worst economic situation in our lifetimes. And so I, I do have some concerns about this. And I obviously think the town should be more in tune with this sort of thing. It shouldn't be like, you know, we just cut you, cut you a $1.8 million bill, and here you go, pay it. So, so I'm hoping that we can have that discussion, because it is, I'm concerned about our, how we, how we are viewed, you know, by the, by the rating agencies, and I don't want us to be viewed in a negative way. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Let's, we all remember, just recently, when we refunded our bonds, that we had 12, you know, 12 people, 12 lining up to purchase those bonds. Caitlin, we got 1.7 million. But anything less than a AAA, there was no interest in, correct? So it's imperative we keep our AAA, so we can borrow money, so we can run this town. So let's, let's go with a few more questions, and then, I agree with Mr. Vahie, let's, let's start to look for some solutions here. So I see, I see four people lined up. Ms. Marmee, and you've been patient, go ahead.
Thanks very much. So Brian, just, I just need some clarification. At your original vote, when you looked at the new mortality table for public employees, was there anybody from the administration or from finance who was, who was there and who voted? And if so, did they vote to support the new mortality table?
This is Brian Vahie, Chair of the Retirement Board. I'd just like to point out that I was not at the February 26 meeting, but the minutes are posted, and the attendance is posted, and the vote, which we are gonna have to rehold, was unanimous after a discussion, which is noted. I will note that the first select woman was not at that meeting. This interim CFO was. So, there you go. And I'd just like to acknowledge the first select woman's, correct. And the first select woman's brought up some great points, and we would have loved to have heard those points, or probably the folks that were, Mr. Brackfeld was running the meeting, and the other folks at the pension board would have certainly entertained those comments, and probably, there would have been discussion on the, on the motion. But it was, she wasn't there. And I, and actually, I, I would feel free to, for you to encourage everyone to have Moody's Fitch and S&amp;P come on, because the town is not gonna, they're not even gonna have a blip for not funding a part of an ADEC in one fiscal year. And I was a betting man, and I'm still a bit of a betting man. So I'll put up against anybody who wants to put some odds on that one. We can, we can try that out.
So I do have just a follow-up. Okay, so Ms. Bossy was at the meeting, she supported the new mortality table, she voted to support it. And then, following that, the administration decided, I guess, Ms. Kupchak, you said that the administration decided that they weren't comfortable with that new mortality table, and then they gave direction directly to Hooker and Holcomb, who then presented the data to the Board of Finance. But was the Pension Board informed of that sort of process in terms of when, when the administration went to Hooker and Holcomb? I'm just trying to understand how, you know, we can be more transparent, or what, what happened here, where the disconnect was?
Sheila, this is Caitlin, I just.
Oh, go ahead, Caitlin. No, I wasn't, I, it wasn't Hooker and Holcomb that was on this rating agency call. And yes.
No, I, I know they weren't on the rating agency call, but they did, they did present to the Board of Finance. So I'm wondering, the channel, you know, the Pension Board voted, then, following that, there was some sort of a conversation with your administration, Ms. Kupchak, correct, to sort of say, this, we're not comfortable with this. You had mentioned earlier that there was a conversation that you weren't comfortable with using that new mortality data, because we talked about who kind of has the authority to make those sort of decisions. So did the administration then talk to Hooker and Holcomb, and then, but not go back, loop back to the Pension Board and talk about their concerns? That's where I'm, I'm not understanding this, this process of communication.
So if I can just say to you that, obviously, I took over a little less than six months ago, and then we had a pandemic. So the pension, it seems like the communication isn't quite as good as I think it should be between these boards. So for example, we, I terminated the Finance Director. We had a pandemic. We have a bill pile. And meanwhile, I find out that the Pension Board took a vote on this mortality table. And when Caitlin came back and spoke to us in the Finance Department, and Mr. Bremer and myself, and explained about it, we did look into it and speak to the other agencies, and found out what it actually meant to the town. And that's when we went back and said, well, wait a minute, we're not sure that this is the right thing for us to be doing. So there should be, you know, granted, there's a lot going on right now, but I think there should be a more streamlined process. But there should be better communication, I feel. You know, I'm not a finance person, that's not my expertise, and I'm, I'm happy to say that, that's true. But when other financial people say that the Pension Board should probably have better communication and with everyone before a serious vote like that is taken. So that's all. That's what I would say to you, Sheila.
Can I just chime in?
Sure.
Yeah, let me go to, yep, Caitlin, go ahead.
Okay, so Sheila, yes, I was at the meeting. It was the first that I heard about a new mortality table. No previous discussion with Mr. Mayor, with any rating agencies, Lynda Gardner. So anything that was put in the budget book was with the old mortality table going forward from the first selectman, first selectwoman's budget to the Board of Selectmen. So the vote took place, and it was a, yes, this table more accurately reflects the public sector that we're in. And I think we all agree, Pension Board, and I don't want to speak for everybody there, the administration, we all agree that we should adopt these tables. I think it comes down to, like Mr. Baldwin said, it was, it was timing, and it's a question of when to adopt these tables. So when I spoke with Brenda and Tom the day following the Pension Board meeting, we called Hooker and Holcomb, and we said to Stefan, you know, what exactly does this mean? We actually, he came down to our offices, either that day or the next day, and we talked about these new mortality tables. And we talked about possibly phasing them in. We talked about half of the municipalities that are doing it. Again, it wasn't, the 2019 valuation is the first time these tables have been implemented for any municipality. We discussed having an experience study, we discussed phasing them in at some point, knowing that there was a vote, and that it was a recommending vote. But come February 26, we're fully engrossed in the budget cycle. We didn't think it was the year to put a $1.8 million hit onto the fiscal '21 budget. So we did talk with Stefan. He did incorporate those new mortality tables to show the impact of them on the presentation from, I believe it was last week, which again, is the $1.8 million difference between the mortality table that we're using and the new one. We now have a plan going forward, we're hoping, to phase in these new mortality tables going forward, which would then impact the '22 budget going forward.
Thank you. And so you, did somebody then circled back with the Pension Board? That's just my question. Like I, was this, how did, Mr. Vahie, how did you discover, I mean, because this was a surprise.
So if I could just, I, I should have finished up with that. So Mr. Vahie wasn't there. We did speak with Mr. Brackfeld, who was running the, the meeting. And subsequent to that, Mr. Bremer and Mr. Vahie have, and I can speak for Mr. Vahie, but have spoken, and we did apologize for not circling back with him sooner, because we should have.
So Mr. Vahie, just to follow up on that, I mean, do you, I mean, this is a communications process, so just your perspective on that in terms of... So just your perspective on that in terms of, again, the board being informed or going against the vote? I mean, what's your perspective on that?
Um, not one to, to parse. Uh, I think it was a gross overstep. And, um, I was, I, I wasn't just upset, the, uh, entire board. When this came to light at our most recent April meeting, um, and that, and that's why honestly, and another reason why I'm here, because it's my obligation to, to not just the, the Pension Trust and OPEB, but also to represent my board as Chair to come before you because, um, that, yeah, it's, it, hopefully it'll never happen again. This is something that, um, there, there was no feedback loop. And, um, I think there might've been some misunderstanding on, uh, the delation of, of what the Pension Board is entrusted to do and what the town administration has to do. And, um, there actually are legal bright lines with, uh, regards to retirement assets.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, as we talk about communication errors, communication errors on both sides here. And that's why we're sitting here tonight. It, it's definitely not one-sided. I think, you know, Ms. Bossy, you put forth a very good explanation of what happened. So thank you for that. You know, it's, I, you know, Ms. Bossy also, when she walked into that meeting, and I don't want to speak for you, Caitlin, you had no idea that that vote was going to take place. It seemed like, so it, it, again, it's a vote that, there's definitely a sense of the body type, but it's not a legal vote. And so there is room for discussion on that. If nothing else, on the year that this should be implemented, in my opinion. And that's something, what I would like to do is ask a few more questions to this. And then I want to get on to it, the solution. And so I'll go to Ms. Charlton and then Mr. Walsh.
Uh, my, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lori Charlton. Um, and thank you Caitlin and Brenda for the explanations. I, I get it. We had a, uh, change in administration turnover. You know, this wasn't something people thought about in advance. And, uh, it came upon everyone at, at a late date when perhaps it was impractical to try to deal with it from a budget perspective. But, you know, my question, and I would ask this to Hooker and Holcomb as well as, you know, the administration. And maybe this is a tough question, but, you know, why wasn't this disclosed to the Board of Finance? I mean, if we had two alternatives in front of us and the administration went one way and the Pension Board had recommended something else, isn't, isn't that something that should have been disclosed to us? Um, you know, as I, I say that as, you know, in my other, in, in my other professional life, uh, you know, as a, as, you know, someone who does audits and reports to a Board of Directors, that's a, it's, it's required under my set of professional standards to communicate to a board when there are different alternatives like this that would result in, you know, materially different, uh, numbers. And, you know, we disclosed that there were two alternatives considered and, you know, this is the way management went. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know the actuarial, uh, professional standards and if you have a similar obligation, but I, I guess where I'm concerned is that the transparency wasn't there and it didn't come up, um, at all. Um, I think we could have had a robust discussion and debated whether we should use the tables and not fund it, use the tables and fund it, um, delay using the tables, et cetera. But, um, you know, I just, I think going forward, the transparency, um, you know, that's not a, that wasn't a communication breakdown. I think the communication breakdown maybe between the administration and the Pension Board not reconnecting after a decision is made was one thing. But, um, you know, we, we didn't hear about this and that's the part that I think needs to be, um, you know, that's, that's a concern on my part. Uh, I'll just be frank. And I, I think that that's something we have to, uh, be cognizant of and, and fix going forward. So for Stefan, I mean, I just, maybe you can comment on that. But is there, you know, did we misunderstand? Did you think you brought this to our attention that, you know, there were, that the, you know, there were multiple scenarios and that one was chosen that was different from the, uh, what the Pension Board discussed?
Now, um, so Stefan, to respond to your question, now, I didn't specifically say the Pension Board said one thing and the administrative said another thing because I don't, I don't realize that there are two separate entities really at, when at the meeting. So what I did tell you, I said, there's two, there's two sets of numbers. There's a baseline with no, no assumptions changes and there's a new mortality table. And I don't remember the gentleman that specifically asked about the mortality table. We, I talked about, there's different ways to phase it in. One, you can go all in. That's when we talked about saying, I think about 50% of our clients have adopted it. Um, I said, there's different ways, you know, you, some do, some don't, whatever, for whatever reason. You know, obviously it's a budgetary one. You know, if people were deciding today, most of them would probably say that they're going to pull off on it. So then we talked about different ways. I said, there's always other options. You know, I know of some plans that can, that are choosing to phase it in over two years and others may, they choose to phase it in over three years. So it's just a matter of when they choose to adopt it. Um, I said more, I said probably you'd see over maybe 50 to 60% adopting it by 7120. And then probably in two years, you'd have probably 80 plus percent of the towns adopting it. So we did talk about it specifically at that night and we did talk about the 1.8 million difference in the numbers.
Okay. I, I didn't, I guess what the part I missed was that it had been discussed a month with our Pension Board and that they had made a recommendation, if not a vote. Um, I guess the other thing I would just say is in terms of the timing of this and, um, to respond to Ms. Kupchik's comment, I, I get it. Um, I do not agree with the statement that it is irresponsible to adopt the table. I think what I worry about is, um, you know, Mr. Brown has talked a lot about, you know, we're, this isn't going to be a one-year process. This trouble with our budget is going to be a multi-year process. And he's talked about the cliff that we face, um, you know, in the future when we, you know, take various approaches to reduce our expenses. And we haven't, you know, this just adds to the cliff because this doesn't change our liability. It just changes us recognizing that it's there. So.
Correct, correct.
That, that part, and this is not for you, um, and this is not for H and H. I just, for all of us, you know, we've got, you know, we've got a lot, we've got multiple headwinds coming. And this is just, we're just going to have to pay the piper next year. So I think it would have been, um, helpful for us to discuss it because I think there's alternative points of view. But I'll just, um, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. But I would suggest that if, if there are, if there are situations like this when there are alternatives that should be considered and that we should, you know, you know, it just should be clear to us that we're signing up for the one that was picked. Because I, the way I understood the conversation was that this was something that was going to be, um, impacting us going forward and not something that was a decision point for the current year. So, thank you.
So Ms. Charlton, very fair points. All of them. Thank you. Um, Mr. Walsh and then Mr. Matola.
Good evening, Mr. Vahy. Thanks for being here. I know you weren't here for the February meeting. Did you know that vote was coming up for the February meeting? Do you know that, did you know that that was going to be voted on at the February meeting?
Did I, can I, that, that's the question? So I knew that, uh, Hooker and Holcomb was going to be presenting. Um, I did not get a preview. Uh, matter of fact, it was a hard copy that was handed out. Um, so I did not get an e-copy of the actuarial report. Um, and I did, uh, um, hear about it, uh, the next day, I believe, actually, after talking to, uh, Mr. Brackfeld who ran the meeting. And, um, while there was a feedback from the, um, administration to Mr. Brackfeld, it wasn't an indication that the number was not going to be used. And I'll just, um, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So you had no conversations with any of your other board members prior to that February 26th meeting that you may be voting on this, on changing the mortality rates?
No, we, um, so the way it, it works is, uh, and I think you guys had the same presentation or a similar presentation. Uh, the actuary, as is required by their, um, standard operating procedures, they have to go through all the various things that impact the valuation. And so there's a list of assumptions and, um, you'll notice in the report also that, uh, the other painful, um, item that was in there, which, uh, I, I don't think we had a lot of conversation about and nor should we have, was the, uh, discount rate. Um, but the actuary, as is required, they showed that, um, I think their own internal calculations show something like a 6.81 versus, uh, a 7% that we currently use. But I mean, though, all those items come forward, so it's not a surprising thing. Um, and as I said, the board is well-equipped to consider, just like your body is, to, um, see the presented materials and, um, and, uh, most of us have gone through it. It's an annual exercise and to make prudent decisions, which I think, um, I know if I had been there, I, I, I see no reason why I would not have also, um, accepted the 2010 table. It's just, um, we don't do mortality tables very often, uh, thank heavens. Because, uh, this is, this has not been, uh, fun. But, um, you know, it's, it's, we, we, we operated as I would have expected our board to operate from a prudent, um, basis. And as far as the conversation and folks not being, uh, finance whizzes or whatever the word, uh, the, the term was used, um, that's the great thing about this Pension Board and the way it was constructed. Uh, there are town residents who volunteer and are appointed. There is administration representation from the first selectman and the chief fiscal officer. And then there's union representation. And I think actually, um, and everybody on that board works hard to understand what they're reviewing and the impact it'll have. And, uh, to remember the fiduciary obligation to the retirement assets. So I, I, I think it's a fantastic board and a very thoughtful board. And, um, and everybody does their part, uh, regardless of whether or not they come from a investment background or, um, or they serve, uh, in the, um, Planning and Development Department of the town. I mean, if you've got all, we've got all folks on there.
These votes have never been held where you're changing assumptions within the, um, pension and the actuarial amounts, um, come up with the ADAC, um, in late February before, to your knowledge, hasn't it?
Yes.
And when was that?
Uh, the most recent time we changed the, uh, discount rate would be the best example, which I think maybe, uh, Stefan can help me, but I think we changed our discount rate to 7% from 7 and a half, um, 2000. I don't say 2012. I have to go back and look at that. But that's, that, that would be, um, rather robust discussion. And, uh, Stefan wasn't our, um, he wasn't actually at Hooker and Holcomb at the time. But I mean, Hooker and Holcomb was our actuary and we, you know, like, just like you have these 10 o'clock meetings. Those are one of our 10 o'clock meetings to have those conversations and, and, uh, and vote.
And in 2012, you're saying that that was done in late February?
Um, generally February timeframe. Um, we usually try January or February. And quite honestly, it's dictated not by us, but generally the CFO that in their own planning process, that's the entire 10 years that I've been doing it, that's when they slotted us. I am informing this body and my own board that, uh, and the actuary that we're going to move it up because, um, obviously it's not an ideal time. And you, you bring a, a good point up that if the administration hasn't properly planned for this eventuality, then they can be cut, they can be caught short. And I think that, uh, to Mr. Baldwin's original point, that's, that's certainly what happened here.
Yeah, I, I can't think of a worse time to potentially have that meeting and to make that decision than maybe February 28th would have been worse. Um, we have a first select woman under our process and whoever's sitting in that seat starts preparing budgets late October, November, December, has to wait for the Board of Education numbers. And then she's got to prepare her budget for the town and get to, into a Board of Selectmen in early March. And actually, in early, in earlier years, that process with the Board of Selectmen had started earlier. So the whole budget's been basically created that we're about to look at. And then you drop an ADAC on us, your board, I'm sorry, not you, you weren't even there, drops an ADAC that increases it to 1.8 and, and we normally as a town like to fund that ADAC. Um, so that we are, you know, the credit agencies look good, doing the right thing. But by that time, it's, it's almost like impossible to put, to change those numbers. It's almost literally, it's almost like impossible because the, the horse is out of the barn. This budget's been prepared and it starts coming to us. And I think there's got to be more work where if you guys think that there's going to be changes, I'm not saying that it's your legal right that you have to do it. You have your own legal rights to do things when you want to do them, whether they hurt the town or not. But I think there's got to be some more coordination be, between the Pension Board and the town, especially when you know you might be changing things for, I guess, a year. And to coordinate and so that everybody can get prepared. Because I know that on our board, we had not heard about any of this coming despite the fact that this table had come out in January, February of 2019. And your email to our chairman to advise him that we're 1.8 million dollars short in funding the ADAC. And you wanted to be heard about that. You know, it doesn't come until April.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, could I just respond to, I, I'm not sure there's quite really a question in there. I think there's some points raised that I'd like to acknowledge.
Mr. Vahy, you ready, Mr. Walsh?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Vahy, thank you.
Uh, so, uh, what I'm hearing is, uh, there's some perhaps umbrage at the, uh, timing of the actuarial, uh, presentation and review and passing on from the Pension Board back to the administration. I think the part that, and I recognize that and, uh, I think I've mentioned it several times. I don't know that if, um, you recall that I specifically said that the town has the first meetings with the actuary and begins their planning process, as you've already said, in October, November. I'm not privy to the budget processing thing. We have one mandate and we do that mandate. I didn't set the meeting. The meeting's set by the administration and they arranged for the actuary to come in. So it's, and this is the way we've done it for 10 years. And so I can appreciate it's a new administration, but I, I, and I don't know what they do on a day-to-day or how they do their process. Um, we weren't, uh, trying to surprise anybody or do anything different than we hadn't done for the past nine years. So I, I, I don't know, you know, what discussions were had or if they bothered to ask the actuary, is this number still good? Are there other things we should be aware of? And perhaps it's something you can ask the actuary about what the process was with the town before he put together his valuation report and then presented to us. I, I, I'm not, I'm not privy to it and I didn't direct it. And, um, I don't know what more I can say. And as far as the budget and how rock solid it is and changes don't happen, um, I, I have been in budget processes for, for large corporations and all sorts of stuff. And I, it's a pretty malleable process where a lot of changes are happening. And I think a fantastic example is what we're seeing right here today with COVID. So I'm pretty sure you've made quite a few changes from what the budget was in February because in February, I was in Austin, Texas at a business meeting and there, there wasn't everything that had happened now. And in the next month, yes, the whole world blew up. And as far as my email being in April, well, my email is in April because no one bothered to inform me that somebody changed a number that was adopted back in February. I would have sent an email right away had I known otherwise, but I wasn't afforded that opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vahid. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Vahid, where do you stand with this idea, I think that about, I'm not sure whether Mr. Baldwin brought it up, about the blending of the municipal table with the tables you currently use? Or is that something your um board would consider, or is that something you're thinking about?
So your question is uh the blending, you you mean just phasing in the, like, paying it over time?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 no, I um I've had discussions uh with Mr. Brown and that, uh, like I said, the solution part, which hopefully we're getting to here is uh, no, we, like I said, we don't have the, we don't have the power of the the pen, the the checkbook. We 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 never do, we just, our our duty is is very similar to the actuary in that the the numbers are what they are, and we present the ones that are most accurate. And if you have uh like you are right now and you want to come and ask us our opinion and the impact and um whether or not you want to take my opinion on what rating you need to look at, I mean, that's that's, I'm here to serve and and answer questions and try and solve things. And effectively by not funding the entire um, there's lots of different ways it's going to catch, and you have two different um, you got the pension, which is a much bigger obligation, even though the the ARC or the ADAC is the very similar in size, I would say like over the long term and the big picture, uh people's actual retirement pay is a much bigger liability for the town than OPEB, just from a big picture perspective. Um, they're in different, they reference different obligations, um and I I certainly do have a viewpoint, and I think our actuary might also have some views on on the two obligations. But I mean, uh, some of the discussions that preliminary that we wanted to come and talk to you about was um fund one or the other, fund part of, you know, which which would, you know, uh, over, you know, do we we recognize it and hit X amount in this year, uh, and how how does that affect? And the actuary can do this uh probably quickly in his head almost, but I mean, if you hit, say it's eleven point, it is eleven point eight, you know, so we uh split the the difference, uh, you know, Doug did nine hundred thousand of the uh ADAC. Um, what does that mean to next year's the number? Um, and once again, we don't know the asset impact and the whole market turmoil, and who knows, maybe it will completely improve between now and then. But anyway, but yeah, those are those are things that we talked about, and I would welcome that conversation, and I think that's what really uh that's where we need to get to. And as far as your very valid point about the timing and everything, um, I've I saw the problem, I I've going back to my board, just trying not have this timing thing be an issue in the future, even when I'm not there. Um, you're correct, uh, and Mr. Baldwin also, as far as communication, um, having the administration there at the meetings, having um, you know, even making sure that before they came to that meeting, I I I obviously made an assumption that they knew that this mortality table was lurking out there, that obviously is not correct. Um, and that that's something that, yep, should we should have better communication to make sure that uh we make this try and go as smooth as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vahid. I do, uh, Mr. Walsh, you said, there's a few others with questions?
Um, so with Mr. Vahid, I've got several questions for um Stefan.
Okay, so let's, I'll come back to you. Mr. Matola?
So, I mean, a lot of people said what I questioned I would have asked, on and so forth. I I think it's important to note that there's been miscommunications between the two sides, but, you know, it it sounds like the actuaries met with the administration in October, so I'm sure this new table was discussed at the those meetings, maybe not, but so here we are today, I think we need to discuss um how we're going to move on from here and whether or not the pension board, how how how, what should their vote be when they meet? Should it be adopted for the next fiscal year? Um, and then I think what Mr. Walsh was going to ask questions of the, our actuary who's here, our Hooker and Holcomb, how we should deal with this situation moving forward. And I I think those are kind of the questions and thoughts that I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matola. Uh, follow up to Mr. Vahid, because I agree with Mr. Vahid that we need to start to look for a solution, and it sounds like you may have some recommendations along with uh H and H. And I do want to clarify, nobody here is telling you, Mr. Vahid, when your votes come, how to vote. We're just talking about process, timing, communication, and everything else, and we want to keep this ADAC, uh, we want to do the right thing by this town, we've always have, and we just have to make sure we're on the same page at the right time. And I'm not sure what conversations were held with the previous administration, but if it was in October, it it was a different administration, so. Uh, Ms. Charlton, do you have further questions on this topic before we go to H and H and then start to come to a solution to this?
Yeah, just one question for Mr. Vahid, and and this will connect, I think, when we start talking about potential solutions, but um we talked about the fact that um if we adopt the tables or or we don't, whatever, we're talking, whether we adopt it this year or next year, this is roughly a one point eight million dollar uh increase. Can you just give us a a very rough idea um based on what we know today about what next year, next year's impact will be of the decline in our investments, just so we can have that in the back of our head? Because I I think that that could impact um this other discussion. So what, just just very briefly, what does that look like?
Um, so surprise, Vahid, Chair of the Investment Board, and uh Stefan, I'm going to throw a number out here, but um this is what you do for a living, and I I'm just uh, this is just my my gut feel. I believe if we're talking about a forty million dollar decline, which would be uh roughly a ten percent decline in the um market value of the assets and the actuarial value of assets are not that far, if I remember correctly from the presentations, there there's sort of close, but we are in the midst of, we already are uh trailing our actuarial assets. And when I say trail, that means we're
Yeah.
we're already like paying a little bit because we're not hitting the seven percent over the, especially the past three years have been blended in. Um, so I think uh uh I I believe it's somewhere around a a two to three million dollar uh hit, if I'm getting that correct, is that um what you would, that's your rough feel, uh Stefan, if we're, there not a whole lot of other changes going on?
You're talking a two or three million dollar hit to the ADAC, is this Stefan?
Right.
Is that what you're, you're really that what you're asking me? So if it's a, you're saying it's a forty million dollar decline?
Yes.
Just from the, so that would roughly, you'd have, you'd have, you already have about a million and a half unrecognized losses there, so that would increase it a little bit. Um, you that would, if you, you know, you take twenty percent of that, you're going to add, what, eight thou-, you know, eight thousand, eight thousand, eight or eight million, eight million. So for every million, it's about an almost a ninety thousand increase in the ADAC. So if you, you know, that's about seven hundred and twenty thousand increase in the ADAC, if you, if the numbers he's giving me.
Okay, so that's even, that's better then. So it's about seven twenty plus our catch up of the existing one. If it's at forty million, which is a ten percent decline from uh, and the audience sometimes um we're all guilty of realizing it's a, it's a June to June. So um while the market has come, well, it went down thirty something percent, and then it's bounced up, so it's only down um uh roughly fifteen percent, I think, at the close today. Uh, it, you have to actually go back to where it was last June, and and so part of that whole decline, there was a massive run up to the year end, so it's um, I don't remember our, I haven't gotten our flash report for fiscal fiscal year, but anyway.
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Vahid, so Lori Charlton again, so forty million dollar decline, if that's what we're talking about, would result in an additional seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's not so bad, actually, next year in the ADAC. But what it would do is it would, it would impact our funded status, right? Because we would now we, a much more significant liability, so our funding of eighty six percent or whatever the heck it was, will plummet by by some amount. So I just, I just think that as we go forward and talk about solutions or whatever, I just want to keep that in mind. So we're, we're, next year, we would be facing that on top of this mortality table, assuming that we deferred the mortality table for in in its entirety for a year. Or or I guess we could bleed the mortality table in next year over two years, whatever, but that's, you know, at some point, we we have to fund all of this. So those are the, those are roughly the numbers. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, all right, Mr. Walsh, go back to you.
Yeah, so following up on Lori, Lori's question there, so with the change in the mortality rate, if it's adopted plus the seven twenty, we'd be looking at approximately an increase of two point five million dollars, is that correct?
No, you're going to accrete some if you don't do anything, well, uh, Stephanie, if we if we del- if we delay, depends on your, the effective date you're picking for that pub table, right?
Well, he's just talking about remeasuring the liabilities next, if you're just adopted next year, if you think it's going to have roughly the same impact of, you know, the change in liability, that's what I would kind of focus on. So it, i- if it's going to increase the liability, you know, five percent.
Right, so you're saying defer the acknowledgement of the pub table for a year? Well, yes, I would agree.
I think that's what his question was.
Yeah, and if um
Oh, sorry, Jim.
What, and what would our funded percent be with both of those changes, forty million dollar loss? And and the change in the mortality rate, is that going to take us under eighty percent funded?
Well, we already, I mean, in in my presentation, I already showed you what the mortality table did, so that that dropped you just under eighty four percent funded. So if you, if we look at the liabilities at that point in time, which, let me just do that quickly in my head, uh, two forty seven plus. Four seventy four, and so the assets I saw at that point in time was three ninety five, and you're saying it dropped, what, ten percent?
Correct.
So that would probably drop you down about seventy five percent funded? Just a quick, that's my quick analysis.
Seventy five percent funded?
Correct, with that drop, that's due mostly to the drop in the, that's due to the asset drop. Because you, if your assets are dropping, you know, if we just, we're talking forty million dollars, and the liabilities don't change from where they're at today, you you're going to lose a little bit, that's where you get that five to eight percent drop. You, I mean, it's almost a one percent, you know, one to one ratio.
Okay, so that's a fairly big drop. And Mr. Shakira, at the last meeting that you were presenting before us, you talked about triple As and being underfunded, about being funded under eighty percent that they normally don't have, correct?
Correct, that's that's like one of their thresholds, is my understanding?
Eighty percent was the threshold number, if I was correct, right?
Yes.
So that caused another problem, that we could get hit by the rating agencies on, is that correct?
That would be my understanding of how they look at things.
Wow.
Well, Mr. Walsh, may I just follow up on that?
There's a ca- sorry, there's
My question is
also a caveat with the
Go ahead, Brian.
So uh, it gets a little misleading on uh funding rate, uh, or funded status, in that you have to normalize it for um, well, before, in this case, mortality table and for discount rate. So in other words, um, if there's some municipalities, and there are, uh, according to uh uh Stefan's data that he had in his presentation, that we, our discount rate, we sit at the median, um, and so and our funding rate, we sit almost in the top quartile. Um, unfortunately, his graph doesn't parse out from eighty to eighty nine or whatever, but we're we're eighty three or eighty six, depending on what mortality table he takes. So um, so it it's, yes, eighty percent is a line, but you also have to look at the other factors and assumptions that are in there and say, is this an aggressive, or is this, you know, is this a um, a uh, a weak uh funding ratio, or are they have a conservative assumptions in there? So it's a um, while it is below eighty, but they're doing all the right things kind of a thing. So that's just wanted to put that out out there.
Okay, thank you. And I would think just about every municipality in this country is going to have these issues, right? We're all, we're not unique.
I would agree, and we're, you're not going to be unique.
Yeah, we were um, we're talking in the trillions of dollars on the public side. Um, currently, I mean, there's, right, it's a, there's, it's a moving issue, but um, yeah, we had, I'll say the other positive thing for our asset base is that we, uh, in the town of Fairfield, were not heavily um weighted towards equities uh on purpose um and ha- have been that way, uh, because um, well, when you're in, you were funded in the eighties, you don't have to, and unfortunately, some of the towns uh and municipalities that are severely underfunded, they're stretching, whether it be in um private equity or other assets and or public equity. And while that worked out really well up until December, um, uh, and our OPEB, unfortunately, because it can't have some of those assets, that's a, when you, when we do our review, you'll be able to, you can see it right there, because it it does have a little bit more. Um, it adds ten percent more equity, so you'll you'll see it reflected there.
All right, thank you, thank you. Um, Mr. Walsh, go back to you, and then I know Mr. Matola has a question.
Um, yeah, Stefan, this just goes back to what Ms. Charlton said earlier. I mean, I was the one who asked about the mortality rates, you weren't really bringing them up. I brought them up because I thought I heard that there was some issue with the mortality rates, and you never represented to our board that you were at this meeting where they changed the mortality rates, where there was a vote. What was the reason for that?
What was the reason not mentioned in the meeting?
Why wouldn't you have told, why wouldn't you have told us that they had changed them at a vote that you were at? In on February twenty sixth?
I, I would, yeah, um, I don't know if that was my place, I don't know what I was supposed to divulge you, I I told you that I gave you both, I had laid out both sets of numbers, and I said, these are the numbers that I was told, these are with no changes, the the ten point one million, and that if they wanted to go to the new mortality, because I didn't know who who ultimately just, I know they voted on that, and I was told that wasn't a vote, and then I was told that now I said, okay, then I'll present the numbers to your board, the finance board, and I don't know who ultimately will decide what numbers they're going to fund.
Okay, I I I was left with the impression, I think Ms. Charlton seemed to address it as well, that we brought it up, you told us that there was a new municipality thing that that our our pension board was looking at it, and that less than fifty percent of the communities were following the new municipal mortality chart, and that's something that would be decided in the future. And I think that's why we were surprised when we got Mr., our chairman got Mr. Vahid's um email to say that there was actually a vote. So I think that's what caused a lot of the confusion, because we had just had a presentation on, by you.
I understand, I see where the confusion is, that I was, maybe I wasn't clear enough when I said that there was two, the the two sets of numbers that was I had there.
Okay. Um, the other thing I was confused about is I'd asked you whether there was any investment that you had heard of in our portfolio about that, where there had been a significant drop, and you said not that you knew of. And, you know, what's this Allianz account and its major drop? And its major drop of, what I'm hearing is over ten million dollars. Why wasn't that discussed when we asked about it?
I don't recall that, um, and I don't typically get into the specific funds at that type of a meeting. I, I look at more globally the investments and where they're at. I don't go into the specific funds that delve, that, I don't delve into that, that deeply with your board.
Right, well, I, I think you need to go back and listen to our meeting from the last time-
Okay.
-that you were at, and listen to the questions, because I think some of us don't feel like we got the most straightforward answers now that we're here today. So I, I would, I'd ask you to go back and listen to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh, any follow up?
No.
Mr. Matola.
Actually, I'm okay, Mr. Brown, thank you.
So let me, let me try and change course a little bit, Mr. Veyhe. I don't know, uh, how much, you know, out on the ledge you wanna go, but do you have any recommendations, thoughts for this board to consider? You know, we're voting on this budget a week from, I think, tonight. Uh, so getting into, you know, we have our pension, we have our OPEB. Do you have any thoughts for us that we can consider over the next week?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Brian Veyhe. I, um, I mean, I, as far as going out on a limb, I think, uh, you know, our conversations that we, we had had, um, previously, I, I don't know, um, all the moving parts in the budget, and I, I apologize, I, I, well, I, I, I don't run for the Board of Finance Board for a reason, um, so I don't know the bag-
I'm specifically, I'm specifically talking about pension and OPEB, just-
Sure, but I, for, for me, it helps to know context. So I, I, I know we're talking twenty-one, I'm cuffing it, twenty-one million dollars total, uh, ARC or ADEC for two different, uh, bodies. And I, you know, I tell people that if I were in a, a bubble, um, and just sitting with the obligation that myself and, and any of my board members sit in, sure, our, our answer, and it's not to be glib, our answer would be like, hey, we, we wanna see the entire obligation funded, because we understand that it's a long-term obligation, and it compounds if you don't fund it, and you get yourself in a deeper hole. Um, and then I actually tell people, if it's underfunded, yeah, actually, my answer would be the ARC plus throw a lump sum at it. But, um, that's living in a bubble, and we, we don't live in a bubble. The, the reality is, um, the town's suffering a, a big revenue shortfall potentially here, um, and inability to cut a lot of costs rapidly. So how, what do we, what do we do, and what ca- what, what impacts do we cause by, um, like, funding a portion of, uh, for example, an ADEC over, over, you know, by pushing off some of the ADEC this year, what, what does that do to next year's number? Um, do I have any opinions? And these are my personal things, I, I guess you'd put it, same question towards my board, I guess. Um, but what I would say, and it's, it's crude, and, um, and I have spoken to Stefan, uh, as well, and use these analogies, and she didn't, uh, abuse me too badly about it. But like I said earlier, the, um, to Mr. Walsh, the retirement, uh, pension is the largest obligation. Uh, OPEB is, is smaller. Uh, I kind of view them in a, in a crude fashion, as if you were thinking of your own personal finances, that one is sort of like your mortgage, um, and the other one's like your home equity line. And, um, if you get in trouble with the home equity line, it's, it's gonna have ramifications, but they're not, you're not gonna lose the roof over your head, um, and you'll still have a place to live. Uh, you know, on the, the pension side, it's, it's more of a meal ticket, it's, it's people's actual retirement income. It's like, it's a larger obligation, um, and we know a lot about it. We've been funding it for many years, we know our assumptions in there, we know our funding status, we've sort of dialed things in. Um, and to me, that one is, I, I would defer to that larger one. Um, and there's another, and if I need to rationalize it, or why, you know, what, what, what's going through my head? The thing that I've gotten to witness firsthand, and I think many of you on the Board of Finance have as well, because of your long, um, uh, tenures, is that, uh, the town has, when it was, I think the OPEB was started in two thousand nine, was when the trust was established, and it was put into the code underneath our jurisdiction from an asset and liability perspective. Uh, it went from zero percent funded to, I think we got to the mid-thirties before, uh, the market started to collapse. So that's a rather rapid funding, and the, one of the reasons that it's been possible is because the town has been a net payer into the trust, and has not taken any money out for any obligations. The town has, um, decided, and I, I think it's been great, and it's enabled the funding to go up so quickly, they actually pay incurred costs out of pocket, so not taking it out of the trust. And they only, you, you guys, every year, would take the ARC or the A, ADEC, and you would fully fund whatever the number was. Um, and like I said, not taking any flows out to pay for medical benefits or whatnot. So that's, that's been admirable, and it's put it, the town way ahead, I think, of many other municipalities. I, for a while, I think we were in the top five percent as far as OPEB, uh, status. And once again, rating agencies look at that, they look at that behavior, and it's, um, it's probably gotten you a gold star, um, and certainly helped with the triple A thing. So it's a ten million dollar number, and, uh, Stefan, is there something that also happened with, um, the Obamacare legislation that somehow affected our OPEB?
Well, they repealed the Cadillac tax, so that, that will be a savings when we measure the OPEB liability in twenty twenty, in the next cycle.
Do you, what, uh, do we, what kind of, how ma- how, I'm sorry, how much might that be roughly, any testament?
I, I don't have an idea, because each plan is different, and it's based on the benefits that are provided. Um, so I, I don't, you know, every town is different, some have little savings, some have big savings. Um, I would assume it would be a fairly decent sized number, but how much will it impact the ADEC, a couple percent probably decrease it? Usually, I think we've been seeing two to three percent.
So actually, oh, so our payment will go, will go up? I thought maybe it would go-
No, it'll go, it'll go down, repeal the Cadillac tax, the Cadillac tax is a penalty.
Right, so I thought, right, that's what I thought. So, so to this body, um, and thank you, um, Stefan, is that, um, that's another, you know, knock on wood, but we, a, a liability benefit that is in the pipeline, that would, you know, knock the ten million dollar number on its own. You'd get a liability, um, lo- loss, well, it's a, it's a, it's a net gain too. It reduces the amount that you'd have to pay. So that's another thing that's sort of on the horizon and a good thing, as far as if you're, we're kind of trying to decide, where, where to, uh, to cut. And did that make sense to everyone? I'm sorry, it's a little convoluted.
Yeah. Good thanks, oh, good.
I think, I think it did.
Can I, Jim, can I, one, one comment on that?
I think, what, I think what I'm hearing, and, you know, I was wrong about this earlier, apparently, but that we have more wiggle room in OPEB, right?
Um, Jim, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I'd like to.
Okay, this, this is stuff, just so you know, the current, the current ten million number for the ADEC on, on the OPEB has, does not reflect the new mortality table. So we just, just don't, don't, just because you're gonna get a savings on the Cadillac tax, you're gonna, that, that change in the mortality table will most likely eat that up.
Okay, so, so much for that gain.
I didn't mean to burst your bubble, I, I guess I should have let you dwell on that a little longer.
Yeah, that would have been good, if Brian went on a five-minute spiel on how we were, that was coming on. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Charlton, did you have a question? Did I see you raise your hand?
Uh-
Maybe not.
I think I was just gonna summarize what Mr., I think what Mr. Veyhe was saying to, to cut to the chase was that, you know, fund the pension, don't fund the OPEB, is that, or, or you, if you need to not fund something fully, because we're in a difficult budgetary situation here, uh, there's less risk for not funding the OPEB from a rating agency perspective, et cetera. I mean, does that sum it up?
That's what I'm hearing.
Mr. Veyhe?
Uh, that, that would be correct, and, um, and once again, I think from an outside perspective, this debate and reflecting that, you know, the patterns of behavior, um, you have an established pattern of behavior. I, I have no reason to think that, you know, I'll knock on wood, I don't know what the future's gonna bring us as a town, but, um, I'm sure that, uh, we're gonna continue to, to whittle down, um, our obligation and do the right thing. So I, that, that's kind of a big, big picture, I think.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Walsh.
Um, Mr. Chikira and, and, and Mr. Veyhe, um, you, I know you guys have been looking at this for a year with this mortality rate. Do they tell you what the reasoning is on why the, there's a change in the mortality? What makes municipal, what, uh, people, uh, employees live longer? Well, I can see, I can see Ms. Cuckins looking younger, the more she works for the town. She looks like she'll live longer every day.
I, I think it came as a big surprise to everybody when they were associated with-
Are you trying to say, Mr. Walsh, that I look old and haggard?
No, you're looking good, I mean, this whole thing's been great for you, I can see.
Oh, yeah, great. I sleep two, three hours a night, really good, great.
So is there a reason, uh?
Uh, this is Stefan, as I was saying, that, that, you know, I think it came as a surprise to everybody that they found that out, that, uh, these, uh, people in the public sector services were living longer. And obviously, what the biggest surprise was that teachers are, live the longest of everybody. Um, you know, so, I don't know, I don't know what the reason is.
Yeah, so if we were, if, if we had our, if we had our teachers underneath our umbrella, yeah, this, uh, yeah, it's a ma- it's a very big, um, differential, like four to five percent. Um, however-
They are on OPEB.
Oh, we don't. Oh, they are in our, oh, okay, great.
The teachers are not on for OPEB, some of the, some of the employees at Board of Ed are on for, um, OPEB, but not the teachers.
Teachers are required to be covered under OPEB, under Connecticut statute. So you have to provide them the same kind of, the, the ki- same kind of, uh, benefits that they enact, they, the same retiree rates. And then if they're non-Medicare eligible, that's a bigger cost, and they get to stay, they can stay on the plan, they're not forced to go over to the state plan at sixty-five, most towns encourage it. Um, so it's all, depends on the cost sharing.
Okay.
We're opening up cans of worms that I just, we just-
Yeah, we, that's a, that's a better discussion for another day.
Yeah, and Mr. Walsh, uh, also, that, that Allianz discussion will happen. I, I think I'm supposed to come before the body again next month, so we'll, we'll cover that then.
Excellent, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, get ready to wind this up with final question, Ms. Charlton.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in terms of, uh, I know you, you talked about finding solutions here, and if funding OPEB is, or not, not funding fully, OPEB is, is part of the answer. I just, um, I'm just looking at the budget book here. So OPEB is roughly nine, nine million and change of what's in the budget, um, and the pension is the rest of it. So, um, you know, one thing to consider, if we wanted to keep on track of continuing to fully fund our pension obligations, and knowing that we have a cliff coming in the future, might be, one thing to consider might be to adopt the mortality table, so we don't get a double whammy next year, and continue to fully fund it, um, and, you know, effectively, if, if we've gotta find the, the budget for that, take it out of the OPEB. Just, just one, one suggestion for the board to consider. I think the other thing that I would throw out, and I, I know I have probably, um, voiced this previously, is that, um, if we believe our assumptions, even remotely, that we have a long-term rate of return of seven percent on our assets, a lot of have money sitting in the bank, uh, earning nothing, while we forego, uh, funding these liabilities, because over the long term, uh, not funding them will cost us, you know, presumably, a heck of a lot more. And if we don't believe that, then we don't believe our actuarial assumptions, because we are building all of this on an assumption that we have a long-term rate of return of, of seven percent. I mean, obviously, that didn't come true this year, the market's down, but going forward, you know, that's a long-term view. And, you know, it's like anything else, you know, it's like you take money out of your 401K one year, and that, you know, the impact over a lifetime is enormous. So I think, you know, OPEB might be one consideration, and fund balance, just given the economics, um, realizing the whole thing with the rating agencies, I don't think they're that formulaic and simple, but that would certainly be another, um, solution that I don't think our board should consider if we wanted to fund, um, both.
I, thank you, Ms. Charlton, I agree that those are two options, um, especially on OPEB. And, you know, we saw Ms. Fassi's projections for twenty twenty, and they look a lot more positive than they did a month ago. And so at the end of this fiscal year, we may have a, a positive fund balance, and we could decide, this board will decide what to do with that fund balance. And some of that can certainly be towards funding, uh, whatever, OPEB, or whatever we decide not to fund this year. You know, at, next week, we can make up for it, I'm saying, at the end of our fiscal year. So we do have options before us.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, uh, Chairman, if I could just, uh, Lori Charlton again, I just wanna go back to, um, a comment Mr. Bateson had made earlier, um, about, uh, you know, what we do in terms of funding. And I, um, you know, Mr. Veyhe, unless you tell us differently, I'm going to assume that your board won't change its mind about the mortality tables, um, when you do have a vote. Um, and it's not our place to tell you how to vote, nor to try to engineer, uh, you know, assumptions to, to meet a financial goal. It's supposed to work the other way around. Um, you know, but, um, i- if that's wrong, I mean, if, do, do you anticipate? Because, because if that's right, we're gonna be out here, back to Ed Bateson's comment, with, you know, a recommendation from our pension board that, uh, you know, doesn't align with our budget. So I don't know if you wanna make a brief comment on that or not. Was, was the intention of your, your February, or your May eleventh meeting just to validate what you did in February? Or was it to reopen this question?
Yeah, it, no, it was, uh, because we said that it was, um, so I pointed out that they didn't believe that it would, uh, withstand a, um, FOI challenge. We, we decided we'd, to make sure the record stood clearly that, I mean, I, I'm sure there'll be discussions just like there was, uh, last time, and, um, but I, it was unanimous. I, I, uh, I, and I can't predict what my, um, what the board will say. I do know that they, uh, felt strongly that I needed to, to bring to this body what they had done originally. They, 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 um, felt that they, their voice and decision had somehow gotten lost, um, and they wanted it rectified. So I am doing that, and, uh, we'll see what happens on Monday.
Thank you.
We'll know what the board's decision is. Thanks, you will know what your board's decision is when you have that vote.
Yeah, four o'clock, I think it is, I mean.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Leclerc, you, you had your hand up next?
You're muted, Mary.
Am I, um?
Yeah, you're good now, go ahead, Mary.
Am I good?
Yes.
All right, okay, um, sorry, it was when we were talking about the OPEB and the Board of Ed. I think only a very little piece of the Board of Ed is in the OPEB computation, and the, the teachers' piece is zero, and there's a reason why that came up during the audit, and Lori maybe have a better memory than I. I think it's because they don't get post-retirement benefits, um, or, or something that we budgeted at zero. or, or something that we budgeted at zero. But anyway, I, I don't think there's a big piece in there from the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc.
They're in the state pension fund, Mary.
Yeah. No, for, for the other benefits, though, the, the health insurance, right, for OPEB.
I think the non-certified are not covered for OPEB, and the teachers are in the state plan, unless there's a gap before they're Medicare eligible, if I recall, but it's, it's not a lot.
They don't get Medicare.
Mr. Matola, you have?
Yeah, so can someone, because there's a lot of numbers flying around, can, can someone from the Finance Department give us some numbers that we can consider? And maybe I'm not phrasing this the right way. If, if we choose to fully fund the pension based on the new tables, what is that amount? You know, what's gonna be taken out of OPEB? If we don't go that way, can we get, we've had these discussions, but I, I want to see black and white numbers that we can consider. That's, that's all. Do you guys follow what I'm saying? Am I making sense?
Ms. Bossi?
Mr. Walsh said, I'm making sense. Thank you. It was a great discussion. I want to see black and white numbers that we need to consider. And I don't know who's gonna give us that.
Caitlin, do you understand that? Because I'm, I'm actually a little unclear, John, what you mean.
Caitlin, you with this?
What are our options?
Yeah.
Are we gonna fully fund the?
It's one point, one point eight million to fund what they passed on the mortality rate.
That's based on, on the new tables, right? Okay, so it's 1.8 million dollars. So that's the figure, and maybe we take some of that, some, you know, we talk about fund balance possibly. Do we want to fully fund that? I don't know. So.
So what did you want, what did you want from Caitlin, just to be clear?
I kind of want recommendations from the Finance Department, what you think we should do. I think that's important. It's a heavy thing for us as a Board of Finance to decide this solely. What, what does the administration want us to do? Do they want us to fully fund it based on the new tables, the old tables, those types of things?
Okay, so just, right, and I get it, John. We, we did have some conversations about this when we obviously heard about it, and we, we believe in a phase-in. We do not think that we can afford to fund that this year. As a matter of fact, we can't afford to fund it this year.
Well, we might be able to afford it if, if we use OPEB instead, and maybe take a little fund balance, we might be able to do it, right? Possibly. I don't know how board members feel about that.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with the Finance Department before your vote if some of you want to jump on a call and have a dialogue about it, and we crunch some numbers. Again, I'm new here, so, you know, I don't know what you guys like or what you don't like, you know? So, I mean, the COVID document that we gave you is before this pension piece, just to kind of reiterate, that we worked on over the last whatever month or so.
I get it.
So the pension piece is a whole nother little piece, and that's probably another thing.
What Mr. Matola's looking for is recommendations from the Finance Department. So Ms. Bossi?
On the pension, though, Jim?
Well, on how to handle this situation, do pension it off.
I just want to be clear, because they, we work together.
Yes, yes.
I mean, not, not knowing, and, and if I'm, I'm wrong about this, we face a giant cliff years to come, and maybe we want to fully fund it this year, and how can we do that this year? That, that's all. Without, without, you know, hurting the taxpayers. I, we all understand what's going on. There might be ways for us to do that. As, as Ms. Charlton said, we're on the hook for this thing. Maybe it's a good idea to do it now. Mr. Walsh?
Doesn't go away. Right, doesn't go away. So, all right, thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Walsh?
Um, yeah, I just want to be careful about using fund balance to start paying for things in the budget. It's like getting the needle in the vein. Once you get it in, it's hard to, you get addicted to that. Next year, it just creates a cliff, and everyone's gonna want to, they're like, oh, let's just take some more fund balance. We already are using the fund balance this year with the deferral program. If people don't pay us back, we are going against fund balance. We don't know where that's going yet. I know Ms. Bossi's gonna get us some numbers by Friday to hopefully make us feel better. Hopefully, those numbers are good. But if people don't, can't afford to pay us back on that deferral, it's going against fund balance. That's where it's going. Revenue projections, I know we're gonna talk about them. I know we're gonna have a nice discussion about it next meeting, and some of the other things. I think that we're never gonna be able to guess what the tax selection rate's gonna be. I mean, I think Mr. Bremer's number is a good start, but I don't think it's gonna be that number. I would like to use the fund balance as kind of a, a backstop against what, all those revenue projections. We don't know what's gonna happen. So you take all those things in, and all of a sudden, you start, you potentially, with this tsunami that's heading towards us, we could be eating into our fund balance to a, for millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars that we don't, and I don't want to use more fund balance of the 1.8. I, I just don't think it's a good idea. But we could have that discussion, we could have that discussion on Thursday. I don't want to overblow it, but it's just, it's just a problem. It's these cliffs. Using fund balance is a cliff. It's gonna be there next year, unless you use fund balance towards it again.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Charlton?
Yes, just wanted to follow up on Mr. Matola's request to the administration. It would maybe be helpful if it's possible, and maybe H&amp;H could help here. I, I guess part of what would be useful to understand is, in terms of a recommendation, maybe take this over a two- to three-year horizon. So the 1.8 million is the impact of the mortality tables for, let's say we adopted it, right? That would be this year's impact. What would be next year's impact if we adopted this year? Because it's, we're not taking the entire impact of it in one year, right? We're not taking the entire increase of the liability. So I think maybe if we could look out over the next, you know, two to three years, and so we can figure out, okay, if we don't fund this, if we use fund balance, we don't use fund balance, we don't fund it at all, whatever, what are we then looking at next year? That could help us, because I, I appreciate Mr. Walsh's point, but, you know, say you don't use fund balance and you don't fund it at all, you've got the same cliff. It's just a different cliff, you know? You haven't funded it, and you're still facing a hole going forward because, you know, now you haven't funded it. So someday, you're gonna have to come up with the money to fund it. And the, the benefit of using fund balance is you funded it. So, again, I don't know if that makes sense. Be happy to talk, Brenda, you know, to chat with Caitlin or whatever, but maybe if we just kind of look beyond this one budget year, because I, I think that's what's got some of us worried, is that, you know, what we do this year, to everyone's point, Mr. Walsh made the point, Mr. Brown made the point, you know, this, this stuff can come back to bite us significantly in, you know, fiscal '22. So that, that would be my, my suggestion in terms of the recommendation data that, that comes from the administration.
Thank you. That's what we've been looking at since we realized about this 1.8. So we have been looking at that in the, in the Finance Department with Caitlin and Linda and Mr. Bremer, and phasing it in over a period of time to lessen the impact. So obviously, we've got a lot coming at us, so there's a lot of balls in the air. But we would love to look at that, if that's where you guys want us to look at. And, and I don't even, I mean, I want, I want to do that, but I don't even know if that's allowed. So I, I want to see more into that and find out more about that.
Can I say something, Ms. Caitlin?
Go ahead, Caitlin, thank you.
I, I don't want to speak for, for the board, but maybe Mr. Vahy can comment, because I've talked to a couple of members, and it seems as though they are agreeable to use a phased-in approach of this new mortality table, was the last conversation I had with a board member. I don't know, Brian, have you talked to any other members?
I, I think your, your whole phased-in, we're adopting the table, acknowledging the table. Whether you're, whether you fund it fully or fund it over time, that's your phase-in. So we're not taking half a table and then half a table. We're acknowledging the liability, putting it on the books. How it gets funded, it gets funded. I mean, that, that, that's essentially what a blend is. So I mean, that, that's, that's the crux of this whole discussion. Actually, we were gonna acknowledge in our resolution that we realize that the town may or may not have the, because of the current financial situation, have the ability to fund the full obligation in the given fiscal year.
So Stefan, and so it's Caitlin again. Stefan, I don't know if you want, if you can comment on that or not, a phased-in approach and how that works mechanically with your evaluation?
A phased-in, uh, Mr. Stefan, to her question, phased, phased in the mortality table would mean you wouldn't recognize the full impact of mortality table in one year. Not so much funding it, but you would look at the liability. So you kind of blend the liability that comes, that's generated under each mortality table. And you'd kind of, you'd blend them together depending on if you're doing it 50/50 or over three years, then you do a third, a third, a third, you know, a third, two thirds, and then a two-thirds, a third, and then the full table is adopted after three years. So that, that would be how you would phase it in, as opposed to what Brian is saying, and just phase it in, how you fund for it. So that's, that's what that can, and, and the other question is, you're, you're looking at, once it's, once the table's adopted, you can expect that your ADAC to be about 12 million under a 7% discount rate assumption, not taking into account the impact of the assets net drop, you know? So that, that'll change. You know, maybe it goes up to 13 or so after mortality table is fully adopted with the, back to the recent downturn in market.
Stefan, do you think you could put something like this, some kind of, sort of, just a brief chart together for all of us, not just the administration, but for the Board of Finance, for us to kind of see what a phased-in over three years looks like, and how does that fund us? Like, what is the percentage we're funded at? Are we on the right level? Are we within the parameters of what they want to see? That kind of thing, so we could just have that?
Yeah, the only thing I would need would be, you know, if you wanted me to use more updated market, you know, asset value, I would need to know what that is.
I don't know, I don't even know what that means. Someone else tell me.
Can I just, I'll just put, I'll just put a lane in.
Otherwise, I would be doing it based on the 719.
Yeah, you, you have a liability, and the liability is what it is. Like, you, whether or not you, it's just like your mortgage. So if you don't pay your full mortgage, you're just like, all right, well then, what are you gonna pay? You're gonna talk to the bank, you're gonna pay 90, 90% this year, and then, yeah, that, that's what, I mean, that's when you talk about blend, I, I think there's, you're, you're, you're mixing some, some terms and some terminology, I think. So it's just a, it's just a funding mechanism from where we sit. And I'm, I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn.
No, I understand. You understand what you're saying, Mr. Vahy, but I want to keep moving this. I know we can have questions here. Look, there's no way around the liability. We as a board have to decide how are we gonna deal with this gap that we have in our budget. But I know Mr. Walsh has a question, then I'll go to Ms. Charlton.
It's actually got to be addressed to Brian. You're, you're, obviously, it's a very big meeting on, on Monday, the 11th. Would this board be able to participate in that through a video conference, if you're doing a video conference? Because obviously, the administration's gonna want to be there to put its point of view across. And this board, it means a lot too, as well, and we have to vote the next night. So I think it's extremely important that as many board members participate in that as possible, and to give whatever our opinions are to that board. So would you be able to make us part of that video conference? Otherwise, we have to participate on a phone conference pursuant to your agenda.
I, I've never done the, I, I, this is a nifty little thing you guys got going on. This is, I don't know if we were the first ones, and therefore, we got relegated to a conference call, but, sure. I, I, I'll have to defer to the administration to have to do that.
The IT department, work with the Finance Department, and send us an invite or something on how to participate in that. Ms. Kupchak, would you be willing to work with Caitlin and our IT department to see whether we could all be invited onto that meeting on Monday?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Charlton?
Okay, I promise this will be my last question, but I did just want to clarify, because when we look at this over a couple of years, it's really what my question was. The question we're talking about, maybe I got this wrong, but that's not the entire impact of adopting this mortality table, correct? That was just the impact on this year's funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is Stefan. It impacted, but it's basically an impact of almost 2 million each year going forward.
Right, so I just want to, I want to be clear on that, and that's why I raised it. So if, if we're taking some increase in the liability, and we have to now fund over a number of years, and the 1.8 million is only one year's funding, like, you spread that out over three years, in the year two, you got the 1.8 million plus, what, a third of last year's? So that's, that's why I just wanted to understand, I mean, I'm not sure what period of time we are amortizing this increase over.
Think of it this way, think of it this way, it's gonna impact your, your, say your ADAC's 10 million. It's gonna, eventually, your, your ADAC's just gonna grow to another 1.8 million consistently, you know, give or take a hundred thousand.
Okay, so, and that's, that's what I just want to be clear on, because this is not, you know, one and done. We fund 1.8 million, and we can fund it over one year versus three years. Every year, we've got to deal with an extra $2 million because of this.
So thinking, thinking.
So I'm not sure we do ourselves any favors by bleeding this in over three years, because when do you catch up with it at that point? So, you know, again, we can talk about that when we figure out how to deal with it, but I, that's why I suggested, you know, if we do sort of phase this in, what does that do to us next year and the year after? You know, if you phase in the 1.8 million, it just got make it harder. So, you know, the other option, whether it's OPEB, fund balance, or whatever, we can consider that, but as we look at the analysis to John's point, if you want to see what the data looks like under one scenario or another, I just want everybody to, you know, and keep thinking back to Jim's point about the cliffs, and how what we do now impacts us next year. So that was it. Thank you.
So just to really kind of help you out on that, is you're phasing in getting up to the additional 1.8 million. So say, you know, it's 10 million this year, so you're gonna add in another 1 billion, so it's 11 million. And then two years from now, it'll be 12 million, and then from thereafter, you're fully phased in. So you're, you expect your ADAC to be 12 million going forward. So that's what the phase-in is. It's, it's not taking the whole 1.8 million in one year, but recognizing you're gonna have to increase it by, you know, 900,000 one year, then the full 1.8 million the next year.
Caitlin, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dewitt, you had a question?
Just a comment, you know, I, I haven't said too much, because, you know, Mr. Vahy is clearly the expert here. But, but I like the analogy of the mortgage, right? The, the obligation doesn't change, and if the payment's gonna go up, we're just gonna keep paying the same mortgage payment every year. And if we decide, oh, maybe this year we'll pay a little bit less than we did the year before, you're just gonna end up catching up with it, and then over the next X number of years. So, so I'm with Ms. Charlton, you know, over a three-year period might feel better, short-term, but long-term, not, you know, there's not a whole lot of benefit there, right?
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Mr. Bateson?
I was struggling with trying to incorporate this into my line of thought with the ADAC and everything, but Lori, Lori really nailed it with, I was kind of thinking that this might have been a static thing, but it seems like it's gonna be a perpetual thing every year with this 1.8 million. So I, I, I don't know what, I don't know what the use is, is running the exercise of amortizing or bleeding it in. It's bad news. It's not, it's bad news that's just not gonna go away. I, I don't mean to, Brian, when I say bad news, it's bad news for the taxpayers. I realize that you have to deal with these mortality rates and discount rates and stuff like this. And yes, I want to ignore bad information right now, I really do, but I know that it's not in the financial best interest of the town. But I really think we're gonna have to do some horse trading. I, I think this, this mortality rate liability is out there, but I think we're gonna have to do some horse trading with the OPEB to try and incorporate it and smooth it. That's where I am at this. Thanks.
Mr. Walsh?
Is there any, be compared what the mortality rates are for this new municipal thing against what our actual mortality? what our actual mortality rates are, not the actual, like, about how long our employees are living compared to that?
Mr. Stefan, we were talking about maybe looking at an experience study, because we usually do one every five years, and kind of seeing where it winds up. Whether, you know, again, you don't have enough credible data to really fully, you know, come up with your own table that kind of suits your population, just not enough bodies.
Yeah, a good example of that is.
Which table you're more consistent with, where you're aligned to, whether it's the current table or this new mortality table, about what it would tell you. But again, it's going to be skewed a little bit, just because there's not enough population there.
Right, and so, and anecdotally, so this year, so every year when Hooker does the table, they actually, at the beginning, when he's talking about the liability section, it actually says, you know, look, you got a little bit of lift, because some people lived or died earlier, which is just, that's very morbid, but that's how it works. And, but you know, like you said, there's just not enough data points. So, you get like, you know, a few, but it's not statistically valid to go say, hey, we're going to just go and make our own, which is what big plans do actually get to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tistani?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. This is Jack Tistani. Just a quick question. I'm curious, maybe this is more of a question for Stefan. Have there been other communities, perhaps in this area, Fairfield County or anywhere else that you're aware of that have had a similar situation, and perhaps maybe you could share with us what they've done to resolve anything that would be, you know, remotely close to being similar? Or if you don't know that now, is that something you could find out for us?
Mr. Stefan, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. You're asking if towns have come up with, they've seen these budget numbers, and how they're going to handle their budget?
No, what I'm asking, has there been a similar situation to what we're discussing in another community that you're aware of that Hooker?
I've had a few, and a couple have bit the bullet, and a couple said, there's no way we can fund this, so we're going to hold off for another year. So, I've had both ways. And again, probably a 50/50 split of who said yes and who said no.
And, yeah, and I was actually talking to Stefan on that same topic, just doing my own, I mean, roughly, most municipalities are rolling it in when it's coming up. And a neat example that's out there is the state of Missouri. I have to Google it, but they, part of their legislative statute says that, I don't know, some part of their committee or on the state level has to review not just their state pension, but they look at all their municipalities' pension, and it's a giant PDF, and it's got over 200 towns and municipalities, and it gives their funding level, mortality tables, and you can flip through them. And so, I went through, and it, you know, yeah, you're seeing it, it's not all the way through, but there, it looks like they are, whatever, they're adopting it, it's washing through their system. So, it's kind of an interesting marker that's out there, if you're curious to kind of flip through something like that.
So, when, just to clarify, Stefan, when you say bit the bullet, are you saying took on the whole liability at one time, or did some blend it, like we've been talking about? I'm just trying to get a sense of what most.
Yeah, I've only had a couple done the phase-in, because either they're either all-in or all-out, but we've had a few recently that have elected to go with the phased-in approach that I've mentioned. And again, the municipalities kind of deal with the same kind of issue you are in the funding. I think most of them were decided upon before COVID hit, so they don't have that kind of going against them like you guys are doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Stefan, you just expand on that and say, you're saying that this grouping that you're speaking of now is the 50% of the towns that are dealing, what are the other 50% doing?
They have delayed adopting it, but then there's, like I said, there's a few handful of them that have elected to do the phased-in approach.
So, 50% delayed, and the other 50% was a split between phased and full adoption?
More or less, I would say, yes. I mean, I don't have exact numbers. It's just, you know, asking the other consultants, and their experience, as well as mine in our office, you know, where they're, you know, where they're at with the tables.
Okay.
We're going to be doing a study, because once, as all the 19 CAFers are out there, we'll do a study and see what tables have been adopted as of 6/30/19. So, we'll have that study, and I'll certainly pass that on to you guys.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tistani. And look, I understand benchmarking against other towns in some areas, but I think what we know, what we're going to discuss on Thursday, is we have to do what's right for this town. And we know that this liability, as we've said over and over, is not going away phased in. Mr. Vahy's been very clear on that. So, we'll do, as Mr. Bateson said, we'll see what horse trading we could do. We have some big decisions coming up over the next week. We'll keep our communication open with each other, and, you know, we have to, you know, we have to look at what tax rate we're comfortable with, if any, and then we have to look where our reductions are going to come from, and we need to look at these long-term liabilities and fill in the gaps. So, all of us have a lot of work to do over the next seven days, and we'll work with each other, and we'll share information. And Thursday's a big night. We'll see how close we can get to where we need to be Thursday night, and then we have the weekend to continue working, you know, with our respective caucuses and communicating with each other across caucuses as well. We'll work with the administration, we'll come up with some ideas, and we'll do everything we can to bring this home Tuesday night. One thing we know is not, it's one of those budget years where not, probably anyone's going to be happy, but we'll, except for, hopefully, perhaps, if we can get this in at, you know, as close to zero as possible, with maintaining as many of the services as possible, we've done our job. So, are there any further questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that I would hope that we can all be collaborative and work together, because obviously, we've been offering throughout this process to be open and transparent and provide as much information. And some of this, you know, the spreadsheets or whatever, but, you know, just dialogue over the phone, you know, questions. It's so much easier, I think, you know, people request a whole bunch of information, and it's just in emails, and maybe some people don't read it, but I think it's more productive to have real conversations over the phone and be able to dialogue that way. And so, I've had those with many of your members, and I would hope to continue that, because obviously, we're all together, right? This is our community, this is our town, and, you know, the people of Fairfield have a certain level of expectation of what they bought into, into this community, and we are dealing with a very significant situation, very significant. And now we have this pension thing, you know, it just, it just never ends, does it? I really hope we can do, work together, because, you know, it's not about me, it's not about the Board of Finance, it's not about the RTM, you know, it's about the people who live in this community. So, Team Fairfield, right?
We agree.
Okay, thanks.
Mary, you had a follow-up? This is Claire.
It's okay, I'll pass on it. It was when they were talking, it was a follow-up to Brenda's question earlier on.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Claire. Okay, seeing no further comments, right?
Just a quick thing, does everyone want a link to the Pension Board, or just certain members, or their preference?
I think it's easiest to, easiest to send everyone a link, and then whoever can get on will get on.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Vahy. Thank you, Stefan. Thank you to the board.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mrs. Charlton, all in favor? Say aye, it is unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you.